I call this City Commission Workshop of Tuesday, October the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, to order at five oh four P M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Derek Bolden, following by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the light of the new day, with your mercies that move towards us. We thank you for your sufficient grace. We pray that you, let's say, we're going here with a clear mind, a clear heart, and that it stay true to the convictions that we've been given from you, to continue to lead and govern our city. In your most holy name, we give you praise and thanks. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney. City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and for those who are listening on uh social media, let me thank you for tuning in. The topic of our workshop today is the discussion of the City Manager Proposed Contract. I'd just like to first of all, thank all the Commissioners for being here today in person. This is a very important uh workshop, it'll give us some guidance on how we would vote to support or make any amendments or other recommendations as it pertain to the City Manager Contract. We all have received a copy of it, we want to try our best to go over the entire contract and make sure that we are in agreement with whatever has been proposed. And nothing will move forward without a majority vote. We have five different individual Commission, we think different, which is great, but we do need to come and reach a consensus to approve anything we want to move forward. So we'll have, we'll start off by having the City, I was gonna have the City Attorney do it, but I have the City Manager start off uh going over the contract. And each item that calls for any discussion, we want to begin to do some deliberation and approval, whether or not, we certainly can't vote in a workshop, but we can get a consensus. So if there's any changes to this contract, the City Attorney would then do the final averaging based on what we have decided to do here today. And Mr. Jackson, if you would, you could start just going over your contract, and we can stop at any time to discuss any points that we may have some disagreement or need some discussion on.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Get started, as indicated, the workshop is to consider the contract with the City Manager in the City of Pahokee. First and foremost, the contract was developed in fashion in accordance to the City's Code of Ordinances, Article Three, Division Four, that spells out responsible qualifications, appointment, employment status, compensation, bonding, power and duties, termination and severance pay for a City Manager as an officer um of the City. The first um section just talks about the employment agreement itself. It's more of def- more of definition defining. Uh it has an agreement, and it's between the City of Pahokee, which is referred to as the employer, and between myself as the manager. And throughout the agreement, the employer is referenced as the City of Pahokee, or the City Commission, and the manager is referred to as as myself. The first whereas, um it just covers the City's, the Commission desires to employ a manager pursuant to its own charter and Code of Ordinances, as referenced a minute ago. And it's applicable to county code provisions and state law as well. So the parameters again of the agreement is foundation, foundationally is is cemented in the in the City's Code and county and state law as well. And the second whereas deals with the desire to provide certain benefits and establish certain conditions of employment for the manager in accordance with the total agreement. And continuing, the third whereas is a desire to secure and retain the services of the City Manager to provide inducement to remain in such employment. And the fourth whereas deals with City Manager desires to accept, this is saying that I will accept employment as a City Manager in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement. Now, a lot of times, we often, I can't say we often, oftentimes people see the whereas and kind of just run through them and without giving a whole lot of thought and consideration to them. But they're there for a reason, they spell out, each one spell out specific understandings and appreciation for the total agreement. So I'm gonna keep that in mind as we move forward. And therefore is in consideration of the covenants and mutual promises set forth here, and the party agrees. And starting in Section One, it highlights the conditions of the first whereas. It's an employment agreement, and it's divided A, B, C, D, and E. A talks about, again, the Commission hereby hires and appoints City Manager under the terms established here, and to pertain, to perform the duties and functions specified in the Charter, the City Code, county code, applicable, and state law pertaining to the position of City Manager, and to perform such other legally permissible and proper duties and functions as the Commission shall assign from time to time. B, nothing in this agreement shall prevent, limit, or otherwise interfere with the right of the City Manager to resign at any time from his position as a City Manager, subject only to the provisions set forth in this agreement in the City of Pahokee Code of Ordinances. Again, just wanna highlight everything is referenced back to the City's foundational document. C, it shall be the duty of the City Manager to employ, direct, assign, reassign, evaluate, and accept the resignations of City Staff under his supervision, consistent with the City Rules, Policies, Ordinances, Charter, County, State, and Federal Law. The Manager will serve as the Chief Executive Officer of the City. Letter D, it shall be the duty of the City Manager to organize, reorganize, and arrange the City Staff of the City, and to develop and establish internal regulations, rules, and procedures, which the City Manager deems necessary for the efficient and effective operation of the City, consistent, again, with lawful City Directors', policies, ordinances, City Charter, County, State, and Federal Law. And E, the City Manager shall perform the duties of City Manager of the City with reasonable care, diligence, skill, and expertise.
If you would, pause just a second, Mr. Jackson. City Commissioners, do y'all have any questions or concerns with anything within that so far? Thank you.
I have one, just if you can go back up to the whereas, the third whereas.
Mm-hmm.
If we can just input, since we're looking to employ you, if we can just employ where it is desired, the Commission to secure and retain the services of, my, can we put your name in there? I know, but most of them, they have the the name itself in there.
Okay. So you wanna include that, then that third whereas?
In the third whereas.
Okay.
Yeah, and also in the fourth, which, well, you could, where in the fourth, also, where it says, City Mayor, we can uh input your name in there also.
Okay. Okay.
Second, third, and fourth ones?
Yeah, it could be, it could be the second one also. Well, I guess where it says, where it has City Manager, if you could probably input the name.
Okay.
Probably the second, third, and the fourth.
I know you realize this, Vice Mayor, it's it's referenced in the employment agreement up top, and it refers to whenever, uh it's Michael Jackson, it's referred to as manager. So every time you see manager, that's that's replacing Michael Jackson.
Right.
Cause their name is at the top of the contract.
Because the name is at the top.
At the title.
Nobody, no, but most of the ones that we even add, well, just most of them, they had the also, they had the manager's name. You know, it don't have to go, they had it in there, but you if you wanna keep it as City Manager, it's up to, it doesn't.
It works either way for me, it's just consensus.
We'll move to Section Two, turn.
Well, I got one question and a question about that. Um I saw that it was in there, in there that.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanna let you know, um, and I think somebody was just saying it, and I'm I'm not far away. I I actually didn't have the five o'clock on my calendar, but I'm about ten minutes away, I guess. But um, but where it says manager, i- in the body of the document, in the very top, in parentheses, it says here and after, if you see in that very first paragraph, it says here and after manager. So if you see, um, and then what I can do is I can add City Manager and manager so that it's um either one that you would be referring to, but you're both, in both, in any instance, you'll be talking about Michael E. Jackson in the very first paragraph. So you you don't really need to add his name throughout the document, because wherever you see manager or City Manager, you would be referring to Michael E. Jackson.
Thank you.
Well, the only uh question that I had, I see at the end of um, there was a uh. C, it was saying the Manager will serve as the Chief Executive Officer of the City. I'm just kind of just curious why we, I know that's understood, as you've been the Chief Executive Officer, but I'm just uh just trying to see if that wording will have any legal ramifications behind it. Uh cause when I read the Charter, it doesn't specifically say that, but when you look at your duties, that we understand that's a part of your job description. And I don't know if the Attorney could explain that, that addition. Did you hear me, Attorney Weeks?
Com- Commissioner, can you um talk just a little bit louder?
Uh yes, I had a question about um C, and it was referring to the Manager will serve as the Chief Executive Officer of the City, but when I read the Charter, it doesn't have that specific wording in the in the particular description. And I just wanted to know if there's any legal.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have to have a specific language from the Charter.
Okay.
We can continue.
Yes.
Okay. Section Two addresses the term of the agreement. A, this contract shall commence on, we'll have to put a different date there, this was a early iteration of the agreement, on date of uh approval, subject to the provisions of the agreement and the City Charter. B, this agreement shall not prevent, limit, or otherwise interfere with the right of City Manager to resign at any time from his position with the City, provided he provides the City thirty days notice in advance. If City Manager resigns, the lump sum for all sick time and vacation time remaining shall be due to the City Manager within thirty days. City may set an earlier departure date at City's option upon receipt of a resignation letter from the City Manager.
Okay, on that one, where it says give a thirty day notice, if we can kind of like tweak that language, because in the Charter, it says from the first up until a year, you get thirty days, but after that, in the Charter, it states, it starts to go three months, six months. So can that language changed and say time of employment based on, and we're gonna follow the guidelines of the Charter, because that's what it says, cause after a year, you have to give, starting a three month, no, a three month um letter of resignation. So if you've been here for more than a year, you can't give a thirty day notice according to the Charter.
Com- Commissioner, I think that's if you don't have a contract. I think that's if you had a, if you were, um, excuse me, through the mayor, if you were um, i- if you, if you were someone who was operating without a contract, that's what you would, that those are the terms. And then if you were like in that position, let's say for an interim basis or or something like that, that's what you would get. But um I'll be happy to look at it once I have um, you know, have it, have the com- computer in front of me, but but I don't believe that's in all cases. That that is specifically if you don't have a a contract or any kind, of any kind.
Yes, um, also, Mayor and Commissioner, the Charter, that's referenced, the section that's referenced is on the Section Two point nine eight, where interim City Manager, and it provides servants' pay for the interim City Manager, and it's based on the time of service and servants' pay schedule that Commissioner Cowan Williams just referenced. Any other questions?
Um, yes, I have one more question, where it says um um, within the City provided provides thirty day notice in advance. If the City Manager resigns, the lump sum for all sick time and vacation time remaining. So further on in the contract, if we wanted to um put something in the contract, like they can only carry over so many hours of sick time, so that language would change and say up to however many hours we agree upon, if that's something that we agree upon in the contract, to say if you have five hundred hours, we're gonna pay you out for five hundred hours if it says up to, um if we say you can only carry over two hundred. So when we get to that, if we can come back and look at that, if that's something that we decide on.
Just in case, we don't wanna lose that, I'm going to uh refer to the City's Employee Handbook. And I think one of the things that uh mentioned a little early on is that paying attention to the whereas is, and the understanding that I I'm being hired to be the Chief Administrator for um a tremendous amount of employees, and I really would like to be considered in light of what's available to all other employees on at least the department head level. So I I'm fine with being, staying within the the City's Handbook, but it becomes kind of difficult to suggest anything uh lower than what's already been approved under the City's Handbook. So I would ask your uh consideration in that area, once we get to that section.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So in the past, I know we've had this issue, especially with our tracking and like, I guess, internal controls, do we have a a clear system of tracking days and keeping up with that? Because we've had that problem in the past, where we were not able to pinpoint the exact number of days that were taken off, whether sick or vacation.
Yes, sir. Our H R department and policies are in place to to capture that. Um I can't speak to what happened in the past, but I I am committed to keep proper alongside with everything else, keep proper um notation of my time off and time work. It'll be presented in a way through the City's forms and format that will allow that it's tracked properly. I would make requests for vacation, if I'm out sick, I would notate that through a sick request or sick note. If I'm out um for any reason, I'll definitely notate that and make it available to human resources, which in turn, upon your request, should be provided to you without any reservations.
I also, from reading it, um, Commissioner Bolden, that you brought that up, cause then a previous um contract that the City had with the former City Manager, that's what they had in there. At at uh each year, they would provide with them what their balance of their time is, um so that we can um keep up with it as well. So I had that somewhere to put as part of the um contract as well.
I I I know it's already in, I even cause a little thought and say every six months. I mean, I have always been concerned about overall uh community, uh community, community relation of the sick and vacation, uh even with Palm Ridge County, their top administrator had so much leave balance that it caused so much concern, and they had a special rule where none of the employee, including the administration, couldn't go over a certain measure of of leave. That way you have at least a general ideal of what the payout would be based on vacation and sick leave, but that's something we can further discuss, I understand, Mr. Jackson, a point of view too, but we will look into that a little later in that particular section to to try to come up with another uh solution, even if it mean changing the entire City policy, not only that the City Manager, all the employees, should be a certain amount of leave you can carry, or most agents in room with that.
Just a suggestion that I I have, just sitting here thinking, uh it may be a question from the beginning. Uh as far as I, the leave and available leave, do we have an automated system that when a person works okay week, we know we get X amount of hours, where that is automated? And I think Commissioner Bolden's question, if correctly from wrong, was directed toward as far as keeping up with accountability, and that's.
I think the part that causes a problem is the deduction of the leave. I don't, I'm not automatically induce, reduce leave based on the time sheets have been submitted and made, but I don't think it does.
Well, that that that's a part of my question. Uh if it's automated, um I'm accustomed to systems, when, if I take leave, I put that request in the computer, and it automatically deducts what I'm, what I'm taking.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we have a system or a place like that, that, you know, we have access to, or.
Yeah, the automation is there.
The thing with that too, i- if it's put in correctly, well, what's been happening, I don't wanna just focus on previous City Managers, but what was happening with previous City Managers, they didn't always put in that time that it would be submitted to be deducted out of the computer. That's a, almost a honor system, where you hoping that that top administrator correctly submit his leave when he's out, or even went to as far as having the mayor have to sign off on any requested leave, so, and I didn't have a a way of even verifying, once I even signed off on it, whether or not it was properly put into the computer.
Well, I have a question. Um if we're supervising people, that's including the City Manager, as far as his staff, to even keep accountability of their leave, um even if we have to go that step, and if you, or the Vice Mayor and Vice Mayor can have um access to approving whatever, leaving that, we would know everything, and it's done automatic, and what I'm saying is give y'all access, but now that's gonna put another responsibility on.
Normally, usually, if the City Manager is out, he would have to notify the mayor. That's normally what it, I know, I know what you're saying, it's it's true, he was notifying the the mayor, and then, like you said, and I guess human, whoever the human resource person is, should be putting in that right information as far as the time, even though you did, you got the sheet, and you have the automated time, or should should jive, it should match up, you know, if it's, you know.
Well, well, my question, if I'm supervising somebody I'm responsible for.
Yeah, of course.
Their their leave, and that the human resource person shouldn't be the one that putting that in. If I'm I'm asking if we can put something in place, maybe the major can, the um mayor and the Vice Mayor can have access, okay, when they're gonna be on vacation? And I don't wanna bog the meeting down with that, but this is something probably down the.
You all make, you all make important, real important and vital points.
And that goes for all of the staff.
Absolutely, and what you described is theoretically in pla- in place, but as the mayor mentioned, it had not always been uh done properly. Case in point, about a month ago, month and a half ago, I requested through H R the calculations for all employees' leave, and when I found, when I received that information, a couple of the employees had already exhausted sick leave and was still requesting sick leave. So there was a reason and a rationale behind it, because I, in my mind, if someone's not at work, I'm automatically saying, well, they can only have so much leave. So that prompted me to ask the question. Since then, we've been, we've been making sure that it's been, the forms have been completed, and that form has been input and improperly placed in in the H R departments. And I've also tasked the supervisors uh to keep, just as you referenced a minute ago, to keep time of all people within their department, their leave. So when the request form comes in, they can adequately look at the request and compare it to the bank of leave, whether it's sick or vacation, to tell them whether or not it's available or not. So I, again, the system is theoretically in place. So, uh, again, the system is theoretically in place. Uh, there's an opportunity to improve upon it, but we are functioning under that, under that auspices as we speak.
Maybe, uh, just to add to my question and we can move on, but, put that responsibility on the supervisor. If there's access already there, what I'm asking is just give that access, parks and rec. They supervise everybody. They supervise and they have a responsibility of going in and making, at each employee. Now they're gonna have to be additional training on showing the people how to put their leave in when they're requesting it. But it eliminates the problem, even if I'm approving as a supervisor, I'm approving you to be off. And you asking for sick leave, you don't have sick leave, I can.
Then how they request there.
Right, right.
Instead of waiting on paperwork from somebody else.
Okay. And, and as, as, I know we'll eventually get here, but I just wanted to refer back to some of the dialogue previously. There is a cap on both vacation leave and sick leave. As it stands now, there is a maximum of three hundred and twenty-five hours, um, of sick leave. And employees who have accrued a vac- a vacation time, I mean, you're required to take the annual vacation time off work. Employees can only carry over two hundred and twenty-five hours as of January first of each year. Employees who accrue vacation leave from the first day of hire, however, the employee must be employed six months prior to taking vacation leave. If an employee's vacation leave accrues exceeds the maximum allowed, no additional time will be added to the employee's annual leave until the total is reduced by the maximum. So a maximum amount is already in the city's handbook. Again, it's something that we just need to make sure it's being followed. And the same thing with, with sick leave, but we can talk a little bit more about that once we get further down into the, the agreement. Any other questions before moving to section three? Section three covers the duties and obligations. The city manager shall have the duties, responsibilities and powers of said office under the City of Pahokee Charter, applicable city and county code of ordinances, statutes, laws, constitutional provisions and policies applicable to the position of city manager. The interim city manager should carry these out in a professional and competent manner.
Are we removing interim?
Yep. It's a strike through it should be.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, uh, we moved forward. So what do we decide about B? We're inputting something. We're inputting. Where about, we're inputting back to B, we decided we're inputting. Um, I know we did a lot of conversation as far as the time. We're putting something in place in the contract?
For the time?
Right.
The carryover?
Yeah, no. Where it says, um, we're here, we was in, um, B. So we decided that we're putting in and he's gonna give us his time every six months, every once a year. What do we decide?
I see what you're saying. Currently as annually, I just would suggest we get, uh, city manager time on a, uh, six month basis. And we can have at least a record of what's there.
So every six months, city manager will have a commission update on, on time that he has. For the language for the contract, something to that effect.
But as far as the group itself, do you think six months is too much to ask or you wanna stick with the annual?
No, I think. Well, it takes annual vacation pretty much, so.
I think annually is.
Annual is fine. Cause then we'll know beginning of the next year what they, you know, once we know what they start off with in the beginning and kind of gauge it, I think, yeah. Until it comes to, so, so we'll add that part in annually.
So that I'm clear, could you, could you kind of restate what you, what you're saying, Commissioner, Colin Williams?
Yes, annually, city manager will provide city commission with, um, whatever sick time or vacation time he may have. His balance of his time on an annual basis.
And just to add, well, just to add that if you had to automate a system and somebody's approving that, they would automatically see that. But I still, I'm not disagreeing yet. It does need to come before the entire commission. I agree totally with that.
Is everybody not gonna have access to that system you just said?
Yeah, no, 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 that's what I'm saying. Still bring it to the commission. But those that'll be supervisors, which I would say leave that responsibility on the mayor. If we can get that automated system that, you know.
Okay.
But I'm not, I agree totally with what you're saying.
Did you capture that?
I got what she said, so.
You was able to catch that, uh, city attorney?
I'm listening, but I'm probably gonna go back to the beginning of this tape and just listen.
Okay, cause that was only right now major change that we have in the contract, but I know there're gonna be some additional changes, but.
Okay, yes, I do have some.
We're just asking the city manager in his contract to provide the city commission on an annual basis, his balance of sick and vacation, so we'll have some idea of what a payout would be if he left.
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
Okay, is there any questions under A?
I've got one question, but Mr. Bolden had brought up the interim city manager.
Yeah, we took interim out.
And rather just come up with the date of this contract, should commence on what date? I know we took out August twenty seventh of this.
Generally, it'd be, it would be the date of the signing. Everybody executes, the last person executes, that would be the date. And, um, and so if that would be agreeable, then that's the date you would put in.
Of the sign, of the agreement of the contract?
Of the execution of the contract.
Okay.
Unless you all had another date that you wanted to put in.
No, that should be fine.
Okay. You gonna take over, Ms. Attorney, or?
You're doing fine.
Okay. Okay, uh, letter B. The city manager shall remain in the exclusive employ of the city and shall devote all such time, attention, knowledge and skills necessary to faithfully perform his duties and responsibilities and to exercise his powers under this disagreement. The city manager may elect to accept limited teaching and consulting opportunities with the understanding that such arrangements neither constitute interference with nor conflict of interest with any responsibilities under this agreement.
Okay, we're gonna have some questions more likely on that one, commissioners?
Well, the, that's on the ICMA website, actually. Um, I'm, I'm sure that's been a concern at other points, but, uh, based on what I've seen, there's actually nothing wrong with that. Uh, they pretty much were clearing, uh, that being the process for a situation like this.
Right. It, the contract is pretty, as I referenced at the beginning, that it was foundationally, um, carved and drafted under the, um, the guide of the city charter. But I failed to mention that I, I use the international standard for city managers, uh, language to include, in, in the document you have before you too. So there's, there's nothing unique about or, uh, any gotchas in there. It's all based on, uh, professional, uh, contract agreements for city managers throughout the country and throughout the world.
I have a question. So, um, what constitutes interference? Just also that, for me to clear, or at least have some examples of what that is.
I would, I would say anything that pertains to city business, uh, both present or potentially future. So just say for instance, if I, if I'm act- asked to do a lecture at a, at a college or university, or if I'm, uh, providing some additional, uh, input or resources towards another profession altogether. Then as long as it didn't interfere with city related business, again, whether it's, I'm gonna even go further back to say past, present and future. And I wouldn't consider that as something that would interfere.
No, I just, the reason I ask is, is I wanted us to kind of really be kind of clear. I know it starts out by, uh, talking about exclusive employment. I think employers are typo and devote all such time, attention and knowledge and skills necessary. Should we take that out or should we just accept it as is along with the?
Is that question directed to me? So the, the, it, it says exclusive employment and so that's supposed to be, you know, what it means. But, um, if it were, for instance, if it were something like just the teaching, then you would kind of get it. But the consulting is probably where you wanna look at, the consulting opportunities, you know, what does that mean? And where and how and what limitations you wanna put on that, because that could be kind of vast and so.
I would even go just a little further. When you're doing outside employment, you'd wanna make sure, I think we got the word in, interfere with city, uh, functioning duties. But the time, without specifying anything about time, the person could teach during the day, one or two days a week. And nothing in here would prohibit that if we don't specify. If that's a concern and that would be one of the concerns of mine. You, you, a paying individual with under the twenty thousand plus, I want to be sure that that person is here with his full attention, his focus on moving the city forward. Not to have outside employment. But I understand if, you know, some rules and regulation allow that, but I'm just saying for us.
This, this, this contract is a contract with your manager, so it's no rules or regulations. This is what you all mutually agree to. Those are the boundaries, right? So if, if it were something where you felt you wanted to meet some mid-ground or you wanna let the manager have certain opportunities, you might require him to disclose those and be approved in advance. You might do that. You might, um, whether it's teaching or consulting, whatever it is, you might require that that's a condition of, you know, the employment agreement. And if that doesn't happen, you know, you, you could even have some, um, you know, some penalties that could result. You know, this will be a, it would be a breach of the agreement or it would be, you know, whatever. But, but you could try to, you know, if you wanted to, you could try to reach a middle ground. But exclusive does mean what it says. It means it's supposed to mean exclusive employment of the city. And it would not generally have other things that conflict or not, that's, you know, that's, that would be the exclusive employee of the city.
Because it's still somewhere attorney where it says that the city manager should be, it should be like, this should be his only job. You know, like as you were saying, it should not, he should not have an outside employment.
That's what you all, that's what you all are discussing, you know, whether you, whether that's what you want and how, how, because we can craft it any way that you, you know, you, you say.
I'm looking at like, you know, another job as in, as in being an employee for another organization. If he owns his own business and that's what he does, uh, and every now and then he has to speak at a university or do some consulting work. I'm, I'm basically thinking about the difference between like ongoing employment on the side versus something that he has the power to schedule and, you know, kind of.
That's a conversation with all of you and whether you all are on the same page with that. And you may feel that way and then, you know, you may have colleagues who don't feel that that's what they want. So y'all are, this, this workshop is for you to come to, you know, some terms with what you think.
I don't have a problem with making extra money.
That, that, that was the. That was the intent. I'm not looking to moonlight or have a second job somewhere else. It's only when opportunities present themselves in, in my area of interest and my area of, of expertise. And I've been asking in the past to present. And I, I would like to continue to be able to do that.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
And I have a question. Um, that was gonna be one of my questions. And I know our city have a lot of needs and so that was gonna be one of my questions. Um, if this, if the commission does agree, um, to this, one of my suggestions would be whether he's teaching or consulting in order for us to know whether it's an interference or not. If Mr. Jackson can provide us, um, who he's consulting with or where he's teaching at so that we can know it's not a conflict with the city, if that information can be provided to us for whoever his clients may be in the future, um, that he may have or that he's going to be, um, working with. Cause me personally, for our city, I think we need a full-time city manager, cause I thought city managers was available twenty-four seven. Because what if something happened in the city, then he's, may say be out of town on a consulting job, then what happens? So that's just me. I'm looking for a full-time city manager, so if something happens and they're gone, then what happens? Who's gonna take, you know, who, who's going to be in charge? And I'm looking, that's what I'm looking for. So if that passes, cause majority rules, um, if that information can at least put in there, who you're consulting with, if we can know about, cause if we don't have or know who he's consulting with or teaching, we wouldn't know whether it's a conflict of interest anyway. So that if that could be part of the language, if that's agreed upon.
I don't have any problems with, with disclosing that. But again, uh, I'm not suggesting that I'm, uh, having a second or third job. If this were the case, it would not be during the time that I'm, uh, it'll be some type of leave that I would take. I would know in advance and I would have an opportunity to say yeah, nay. And then I would make the appropriate requests, uh, if possible. And the city does have a succession plan. If the city manager, say if it's on vacation or on leave, there's always someone that will be left in charge. I don't, I don't want it to be, uh, assumed that I am, uh, suggesting otherwise. So if the details is what required, I don't have any issues in, in revealing that. And you have my word that I'm not looking for other types of employment while employed as a full-time city manager.
So would that be a consensus of the commission to allow that to happen with the disclosure? Who is consulting or teaching?
And can we have that, make sure that that's included in section, section B?
That, that's what we, that's what I would do. I would add the language in. And now do you all want this to come back to you like at another meeting? Or are you just depending on me to add it in tonight and?
At, I prefer another meeting. So I can look at a clean copy. Yeah, with the changes, I wanna really look at a clean copy.
You can.
You can continue.
Okay. Trying to remember where I left off. Okay. Uh, letter C. In the event the manager shall serve on an appointed or elected board of any professional organization or serve on any committees related to his professional activities. In the event any monies are paid or gifts received by him related to such service, such money or property shall be paid over to or delivered to the city unless otherwise approved by the city commission. Any questions? Okay, D, professional obligations. During the period of this agreement, the city manager shall adhere to ICMA Code of Ethics, the Code of Ethics of the State of Florida and the Code of Ethics of the Palm Beach County, Florida and the City of Pahokee. The city manager shall not seek or accept any personal enrichments or benefits derived from confidential information or misuse of public office. E, hours of work. It is recognized that the manager must devote a great deal of time outside the normal off, office hours on business for this.
Just that part, there's appropriate work schedule.
Again, she's not just pointing at Mr. Jackson, but since it's a contract, she don't want something coming out of the city. He was in my schedule and we already agreed.
Read to this and we don't have a schedule before us, exactly.
Let, let me just make a point and is, we're talking here. At the same length, do I bring a schedule of the times that I work sixteen hours a day? Or twelve hours a day, which is very common or throughout the weekend? Or should I try to concentrate on just working the defined hours of the city of this, uh, this, this established by the city? I only say that to say that there's, there's both sides, there's, there's two sides to what we're talking about. And I think the focus to this point has been on whether or not I'm not working enough. But I will tell you, I work ten to twelve hours a day, every day, including weekends. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and, and not coming from just one side of this, uh, situation. And if, if need be, I can start, um, presenting my hours of work, showing that I'm over and above, what's required on the working, working normal hours.
I, I think, and it's just my belief, I believe all the commission understand that you work far above the eight hours. You know, I hate to even bring in other folks, but my wife, she's a postmaster. She worked between twelve and fourteen hours. She worked between twelve and fourteen hours, including weekend, sometimes seven days a week. And their assistant don't give them even compensation. Now she can't do some flexing, I'll put it that way. If she didn't work X amount of hours, still coming in Monday, she may take a half a day or even take the entire day off. But that would be at least provided to the supervisor that this what she's doing, she's flexing her time. So that was always, I think, be in there, you have that flexibility. But I guess the commission is just concerned that if we approved the language as it's written here, you can come in at any time and give us a schedule and say, this is my appropriate schedule to work, uh, the next six months. I, I'm just saying, she just made it fearful that that could happen. So if the language, it's only just taking that particular language out, so it don't indicate that.
I understand, I understand. I just wanted to, to raise that point. I don't have any issues with taking it out.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Jackson, it's not that you're not working your hours. Cause you, we understand that. And I don't think you, you know what I'm saying? If you come in, you have to come in two, three hours later. You know, we, we understand you're running the city. So that's not micro, you know, not that you to be micromanaged or anything. Because we understand that you have a job to do. So what I was just saying too, is that, you know, for all of us to come to an agreement, it's not that we're trying to tie you in or anything like that. Cause we don't know now, you know what I'm saying, what you're working in. I'm sure you're gonna flex out and you're an honest person. So if you wouldn't, we wouldn't even be, you know what I'm saying, here where we are today. So it's not that or anything. It's just that, so that if you, it, it's just for all of us to cover all of us. That, that was it, it's nothing to do with you not working your hours or anything like that.
No, I clearly understand that. And I wasn't suggesting that you were suggesting that. I just wanted to, uh, let you know. And obviously you do know, but there's, there's a boat, there's two sides to it. And most of the conversation was geared around not working enough hours. And I just wanted that balance to be, um, publicly stated.
And I think Commissioner Murray kind of stated, I mean, I don't think any of us have a problem with, you know, if you've worked fourteen hours and you're flexing off the next day to kind of balance it out. The general consensus is, I think all of us wanna do what we think is best for the city of Pohokee. And not put ourselves in a bind and, and not anything personally.
I agree, we, we are agreeing.
So would it be a consensus to remove that particular language?
Yes.
Okay. This is a consensus. All right. I'm gonna try to move on. I was hoping we could at least, but we might not be able to do it. At least get the salary part of discussion. And that's right, at the end of this particular page where it has conversation of the manager and benefits.
No, I don't have a problem.
If you would, Mr. Jackson, let's elaborate on that a, a minute.
Okay. Uh, compensation and manager benefits component. It states here that, uh, employees shall pay the manager a base salary of one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the first twelve months, plus other benefits enumerated here, payable on the regular pay periods of the city. This agreement may be amended at any time and shall be reduced to writing following the commission approval. In addition, consideration shall be given on an annual basis to an increase in compensation.
This, to be honest, is gonna be our most delicate discussion. But I can at least start off with the commission up here. Are anyone in favor of that stated salary? I am. Okay, we have one that's will support a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
My question would just be, where would the funding come from? Cause I know during the budget time, we asked for park rangers and different things, and that would just be mine. That's why I'm not in support of it, cause I, where would the funding come from?
The bu, the budget allows for, um, as passed, uh, a couple of months ago, allows for different categories of consultation and other categories of funding that, uh, twenty thousand dollars could be amended through budget amendment to allow for the additional twenty thousand to match the existing one hundred and twenty thousand.
Cause I'm, I'm looking at the budget, the budget that you gave us. I didn't see that anywhere here in the budget. So are you saying, even though the budget that we have, everything in here has numbers by that you put in here, that's accounted for, what you would do is go back and amend it and change it and use those funding for, for the, for your salary?
Which, which budget are you looking at?
The one that says City of Pohokee scheduled expenditures for the year ending in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
You looking, uh, specifically under the city manager's budget?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Department five one two zero one zero, city manager.
Well, budget amendments allow us to make amendments throughout, uh, the budget and not specifically in one category.
So that's what I'm saying. So whatever this money has been accounted for, you will come back and make an amendment and change it to go towards your salary. That's my question I'm asking.
Yes.
So what's really in here is not in that we voted on and passed for as the budget is not what's really needed as for as the city manager?
No, what I'm saying to you is that there's other areas of the budget that you, that you've not looked at. And there's different categories that's over and above the city manager's, uh, specific budget that will allow funds to be used out of those other budgets and line items.
And I guess my concern would be still, I was asking for a park ranger. We didn't have any money, we were told, but we can, I'm just saying, we're gonna be able to find money for twenty, to get an additional twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I will say, and I know it's something that you guys have to consider, I will say, the hundred and forty thousand dollars for starting salary of a city manager in the state of Florida is, is low. I understood and I accepted the initial hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, as an interim city manager. I've been here for right at six months now. And the work that I've done, uh, over these last six months with limited staff, is way worth more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'm requesting a hundred and forty thousand dollars because I think it's, uh, it's a fair request and it's not anything that's, uh, over and above, uh, what, what a city manager and the city size and the city functions that make throughout the state of Florida. This amount, if approved, is, is, is one of the lowest in the county. And I just feel that I'm deserving of a hundred and forty thousand dollar salary. I, without going into a whole lot of details, and I haven't provided you with a complete update, but in six months, I have, um, encountered three audits. In the process of starting a fourth within the next few days. And within the next six to, to nine months, we'll encounter a fifth. So that's five audits in less than a year and a half. And that's with limited staff, no executive secretary, and me doing most of that on my own. So in essence, I'm doing the job of three people, for a salary that's below normal. And again, I don't think it's too much to ask. That's my rationale and reasoning for asking.
To move the amount that's being requested, we would at least need a consensus of three of the commissioners on this task that would agree to that amount. I know Commissioner Bowden, that indicated he has no problem with it. Would need at least two more to get a consensus. If we don't get a consensus, then that's when the negotiation of what we feel would be an appropriate salary for the city manager.
That was, that was Bowden or?
That was, that was me. And I'll say this, um, the average salary for a city manager in the state of Florida is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty. The top earners, which is the ninety percentile, make four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. If you look, go back to twenty twenty-three, their city manager made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. One forty is not unreasonable.
Who, what city make a hundred and fifty thousand?
That was twenty twenty-three, that was Reese. I didn't recall his name.
Oh, but look at their budget and look at our budget.
That, that.
Um, the only thing, um.
For me it is.
With the, and we have to be, we have to be, um, mindful of our budget. You know, this city, this city is only what, four million, five million, in five mil, we have not gotten any, any more av, avalanche taxes, we haven't got any more. Um, our, our infrastructure monies is still the same. To me, to me, and, and it's consensus of the, of the commission. But with the, with the one twenty, there's also a car allowance, which also is adds into your, adds into the, the salary. You have the car allowance, the phone allowance, and all of the other benefits. So once all of the benefits was add up, the one twenty plus all those benefits, it's, it's gonna push it past the one twenty. Just me personally, I, I would think that the one twenty would have been suffice, at least for the first year, for the first year. And then once the evaluation will come or, and you put things in place. You put, uh, you might put some of the quota marks and benchmarks in place. And then you always can, like they said, so you always increase your, your sal, your, your, your salary. But to start off right at like one forty now, you know, I just had, I just had probably the one forty. One twenty, I can say for the first, for the first year, I can, I can, I can really go for that. You know, now me, me personally, that's with the, all of the other benefits included, included. Um, I know Mr. Bowden read about the one seventy-nine. I have, I don't, I don't know where those, cause I read some of the, uh, the status of the, of, of Pohokee and of, of Palm Beach County, the city manager's starting salary. And I know, Mr. Jackson, that came in with a lot of, um, things you had to put in place. I, I know that. I know that it's, you had to work through the audits. But, you know, that's, you know, that's anyone that would stack, that got that position would have to take on that, those, those, um, things. But I think, me, me personally, the one twenty, if the, if the commission's passed with one forty, I'm, I'm fine with it. But I would, I would, um, one twenty to start at least the first year, I, that's, that's where I would have.
And I say this, um, part of the reason why we can talk about pretty much going through the same thing and having the same budget for so many years is because we have, we don't really give enough attention to value. When someone comes in and they show you, now we, we would have had anybody come in and have to deal with the audits. But that doesn't mean everybody would have handled it the same way that Mr. Jackson's handled it. If we do what we've always done, we're gonna get what we've always got. And if we really wanna move forward, that should be the question that we should be asking ourselves. Do we wanna move forward? And sometimes moving forward comes with a price. It is what it is. Part of the reason we struggled when we had Mr. Klein in here was because we had guys with ten, fifteen years of experience. We didn't wanna pay their relocation, we didn't wanna pay their salary, or we, or we couldn't, or whatever. This is not an unre, not an unreasonable salary to pay someone who's showing you their value as an interim. So this is not something that, like I said, we can negotiate and that's fine. But we, we really need to give attention to value and make whatever adjustments we need to make to have the person that we want to move the city forward. That's my opinion, that's my perspective on it.
I just have one question.
Just as an advocate for our city and for the city of Pohokee. And just looking at the holistic approach of this entire thing, I have, uh, to say. And I know Mr. Jackson came with a tremendous amount of things that needed to be done. And I know the audits, they are very important. As a matter of fact, those audits are directly tied to our monetary receipts from the state in certain instances. But if I'm a citizen's, if I'm a citizen and been an advocate for the citizens of Pohokee, if I'm looking, citizens don't wanna hear about audits. And, and I do know, and I do understand that they have to be done in order to move forward. But, um, I would like, I mean, as a citizen, I know they wanna see roads getting fixed, different amenities coming to the city, and I know that kinda stuff don't happen overnight. But what I'm at the, um, what I would suggest is that we negotiate that down, uh, maybe to one thirty. And at the end of the yearly evaluation, based on, you know, performance, as for some of these other things and amenities and things that we can see come to our city, and we can address the rest of it at that time. And that should be something that we look at at every annual evaluation. That's not, that's just saying that we're gonna automatically give them a raise at every evaluation. But, um, make it performance-based. And from what he's done, uh, I'm willing to increase that to this one thirty and, um, but the rest of it, depending on the performance as well, you know, we've been talking about Barfield Road for I don't know how many years. And I know, don't get, don't misunderstand me, I know these things, audits have to be done. I'm a part of the audit committee in order for us to move forward on these things. But as a, every citizen, as a citizen, people wanna see things getting done. If I look at myself as a commission, I, what can I say that we have accomplished? Yeah, I can talk about the paperwork, but we've been talking about paperwork for years. But we haven't fixed one road. And I think the citizens wanna see those things before we start. And no slight to Mr. Jackson, and I think you're doing a tremendous job. But I was voted in this position to be an advocate for the city.
And I would say this, the position was basically advertised at least based on our current, a past city manager at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And to be honest, that's the highest that Poh, that Pohokee in its hundred years have paid. That's the most. One previous city manager started off with a hundred thousand. You're gonna get raises, you're gonna get performance bonuses or whatever it may be. But a lot of raises and a lot of compensation does, uh, depend on results that not only the commission can see, but our residents can also see. The city manager here in Pohokee, we have a population of fifty-six hundred residents. We have a relatively small budget as compared to other cities that's our size, even a little larger than us. The last time I looked at the average salary of a city manager was around, the average, not the median salary, was around eighty-seven thousand dollars. And I'm not disputing what Commissioner Bowden is saying, I'm just saying the last time I looked at the average salary of the city manager. And also, any employee that makes over a hundred thousand dollars a year is in the top two percent. That mean ninety-eight percent of everybody that's working, I'm talking about average now, I'm not talking about just individuals, make less than that. So I think personally, starting off because that's the benchmark that is currently there. And we had interviews previously for a city manager, even the one that Mr. Jackson interviewed for, we had some sharp candidates also, that some was concerned about, we can't afford them without first negotiating what we was able to pay. And most of them say that that's not, may not be true. But the majority of them said, you know, the salary is not a real issue. Because I know the size of Pohokee and where you are financially, I'm Mr. Resident and just doing the work that Pohokee need to do to move it forward. That's what their conversation to us was. And we still, some was concerned that that person may be too expensive. You can only afford what you can afford. I'm not saying we may can't bite the bullet, uh, bullet and find a way to do it. But we send a precedent that when the next city manager come on board, if there's a next, I'm not saying it will be, hopefully they won't, will keep the one we have for many years. But we at least would have set this, the starting point that that's what they would be expecting from this day forward if we do agree to the hundred and forty. So again, that's just my two cents in it. But we still would need, it, it appears that. So, again, that's just my two cents in it, but we still would need, it, it appears that I'm still looking if we do have three consensus that agree to it, then we would leave it as it is in the self-debt, but if not, then we're gonna have to go into some negotiations and some structure of what we can't afford or what we're willing to pay.
Mayor Bab, may I just make a comment? Um, I believe in paying people what they're worth, and again, results, being a teacher, you know, we have to look at our data at the end of the year. Personally, been teaching eighteen years, I think I deserve more than what I'm making, but whatever they negotiate for us, that, you know, we get what we get. And whoever come in teaching, they know what the starting salary is, you go to school, you can come with a masters and all of that. And, um, my concern still is, we have a lot of needs in the city. We say that we don't have enough workers to work in public works, so I'm thinking, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand is what we advertise, and I'm thinking, okay, they said, when they interview, they okay with the salary. Um, I think, this is just me, and we have to get a consensus, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars starting out is fair. Not saying that once they, you know, the year is up, we see some results, but, um, I just, again, looking at the budget, we have a lot of other areas and other people that we, we're saying that we need for our city. Some of those funds can be used for that, because we wanna see our city move forward. You know, we're saying we short here, we short there, we don't have, uh, equipment. I mean, I'm just saying that I just, you know, looking, looking out for, looking out for our city. And I'm not saying that Mr. Jackson, I appreciate everything that he's doing, I do, but at the same token, we, the city has a lot of needs as well. We're getting individuals in and we're paying out money, but again, I live here too, I'm looking at that road, that road, you know what I'm saying, and is, you know, still hasn't moved forward, I'm looking at, you know, a lot of things that I see that still need to be done in our city. So, you know, I don't have a problem with, after he's been here a year and we set goals and he's met some of his goals, and at the end of his evaluation, then we wanna look at it and may say, hey, what can we consider to put in for a raise? And also, I'm looking at, he's also in the contract asking, we pay four percent into his retirement. We oughta take all of that into consideration too, cause those are fundings that we gotta pay him as well. And my question still is, where's all this, where, where's the money coming from?
If I may, um, and, and I appreciate the dialogue and the, uh, the conversation, and I, I really appreciate it, but I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, speak to some of the things that I've heard. Uh, you referenced a couple of different times, uh, the budget. The budget that was approved, uh, this year under the city manager's purview just specifically, is reduced by six point nine percent from last year. The bottom, the bottom number is several thousand, ten, multiple ten thousand dollars less than it was last year, as approved last year. That's first and foremost. So we're not talking about anything adding to or overs- exceeding what was approved last year. I accepted truthfully, I accepted a hundred and twenty thousand dollar salary as an interim manager. We're considering a contract for permanent manager. I understood clearly what I signed up for with the hundred and twenty thousand. Again, this contract is, as negotiated, is for a permanent city manager, which again is very low, considerably low compared to the national average. You mentioned projects. When I started here six months ago, most projects in the city was at least two and a half, three years behind, those that had started at that time. All of those projects to date are very close to, uh, in terms of coming on task and coming on time, they're very close to becoming, coming to fruition. Barfield was mentioned a couple of different times. I'll provide my update tonight that we're, we are very close to finalizing if once the final cha- change orders are approved, we're within thirty days of completion of that project. It's been that way for a while, it was that way at least a year and a half before I came. I've worked day and night to make, to, to encourage contractors to come back to the table. Worked day and night to have funds relief, released from the state of Florida to pay for the contractors to come back on board. I've worked day and night to develop and build city morale that was at the bottom of the barrel when I came. I've worked throughout the community with different community groups and residents through the Opera Program to make sure that that program was back on track. And we met as early as last week with the idea of finalizing or committing all of those funds by the end of this fiscal year. So, no, you probably don't see a whole lot, but I just don't want you to think that a whole lot is not being done. And what I've been able to do with the limited staff, which I will say is an excellent staff, committed to move this city forward, is something I don't think you get a chance to see on a daily basis. If you were to come in and you speak to anyone in City Hall staff, it's a completely different ballgame. When I came in, I didn't know what to expect, they didn't know what to expect, but we've won each other's respect and admiration to work as a team. I'm committed to doing that, I applied for this job to do that, and I'm not only doing it for the money, I'm doing it for the people. But it does take funding for me to provide for me and my family. And again, I don't think that this is too great of an ask, and if it was, I wouldn't do it. So that's the reason why. I wanted to share those things just to clear the record, to make sure that you understood that it's not the budget. The budget is smaller than past years, even with the accret- even with the request for the additional twenty thousand.
Time has elapsed as far as our workshop, what we need to do is reschedule another workshop, and I'm open for as early as tomorrow to go ahead and wrap this contract negotiation up.
Tomorrow is legal season.
And you gotta get a notice.
They gotta get a notice.
We'll be, we'll be at it.
Well, okay, we'll, we'll talk, we're gonna do it as soon as, we'll do it as soon as possible. We'll get a consensus when we're able to meet and do it as soon as possible so we can do this.
Maybe Thursday, well, time be leaving out Thursday.
We got, uh, s- school dialysis and.
That'll, they work too.
In other word, we'll meet as soon as possible, as soon as we're able to do it, but we'll get a consensus when, when we be on next.
What's going, we'll have to look at the calendar for next Tuesday, and we can dedicate the time that we can do, to get this completed.
Tend to that, let's look at next Tuesday. And we need to give ourselves at least two hours, so we wanna start at four.
Well, we're almost through it, and now we just start where we left off, I don't think we need to start the entire.
No, right, we'll start off where we left off there. And that website was government salaries, uh, not just Google, go to government salaries and take a look at that. At this time, we'll adjourn our workshop and reconvene for a regular commission meeting in three minutes. October the twenty-second, two thousand four, to order at six thirty-one PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Everett McPherson Senior, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good gracious and eternal God, we just thank you for another opportunity, come before your presence, Father. I ask that you just elevate our minds and our thoughts, Father, so we'll be able to make this city a city that sits upon a hill that you will be pleased with, Father. Father, we ask that you just touch each and every commission, each and every citizen, Father, that we will be able to work together to move, and continue to work together to move our city forward. Father, we will be so careful to give you all the praises and all the glory, in Jesus mighty name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate in our regular scheduled meeting. City Manager, at this time, do we have any addition on emergency basis?
Yes, sir. Uh, we're requesting to add Resolution twenty-two-four fifty-one, and this resolution pertains to a request for rental water assistance on the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, you should have received the documentation through your add-on agenda. We're requesting that you add this item for tonight's agenda.
City Commission, hearing that, we have one add-on, uh, and no deletions, what is your pleasure for the adoption of the agenda items?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the agenda with the add-on twenty-two-four dash fifty-one.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and Deputy Secretary Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the agenda as presented with the one add-on, which is Resolution twenty-two-four dash fifty-one. Call for questions.
I have a question, Mayor Bab. Should we, um, um, delete, um, item number five, resolution um, for the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, um, with the contract for the city manager, since we're gonna have another workshop?
We just have mentioned that when we come to that, we would table that.
Okay, so not to delete all, okay.
In addition to questions, hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have presentations, proclamation, public service announcement, public comments, agenda items only. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any, well, we move, yeah, any public comments from the audience?
Uh, yes, sir, we have two PSAs. Uh, the first one is from Ms. Annie Iffel.
Good evening, Mayor Commission, um, Annie Iffel with Healthier Glades. Uh, before I give my community, my community announcements, I would like to personally, on behalf of the Pink Walk Committee, personally thank the city of Pohokee for your support. We had a very successful event on Saturday where we had, um, residents coming together to, um, advocate for fight against breast cancer. So it was a very well-attended event, and hopefully this will be a start of a continued relationship, uh, with the, with the city. Just wanna share with you a couple of, of things that are happening in the community. I shared this with the city manager. The community greening and the Office of Resilience, uh, with Palm Beach County had applied for a grant to address issues around, um, tree deserts. So apparently our community have what they call tree desert, where we don't have enough trees to provide adequate shade. So, um, they were awarded the grant, but they were looking at specifically our, our county parks. So one of the things, if you look at, um, Duck and Padgett Park, there's not a lot of trees. If you look at, uh, some other parks, there's not a lot of trees. So they were awarded a, a grant to provide, uh, trees throughout the county parks, but also provide opportunities for residents to get trees. So on November ninth, they, at ten o'clock at Pioneer Park, they're gonna be doing a tree giveaway. So on November ninth, they, at ten o'clock at Pioneer Park, they're gonna be doing a tree giveaway, where they're gonna be giving away two hundred trees. So they're looking at mango, avocado, paradise plants and something like that. I think I sent it to the City Manager. I do have flyers here if anybody wants to get trees for their, for their yards, so that, yes.
How, how mature are these trees? I'm just curious.
How what?
How mature are these trees?
Now that, you know, I, I can take. Yeah, but I know that they said mango, at the, what I saw in the, um, email was mango, avocado, and a couple of other things.
At what time?
Um, ten o'clock. I'm finna give you the flyer now. So that will be on November ninth, and then, um, there was, there'll be, there'll probably be another one after the New Year in January, but I do know they gonna have one on November ninth. The other thing that we're gonna be doing, Healthier Glades has collaborated with Bridges at Pahokee Families First, uh, First Haitian Baptist Church, and some other, um, community partners to start our mental health community conversations. So we're gonna be kicking it off at, um, Bridges at Pahokee this, uh, upcoming Tuesday at five o'clock at Bridges at Pahokee. And this is an opportunity for, um, residents to come together and start having those uncomfortable conversations on how we can support folks who are dealing with mental health challenges. And so, one of the things we realize, we're coming into the holidays, and for many folks, the holidays can trigger a lot of emotions for people. So what we wanted to do is to create that opportunity to open the, um, the floor of conversation on one hot, oh, okay. Oh, I just wanna be respectful, okay. You know, open the conversation on how to identify if somebody's gonna do a mental health challenge, what things can you do as a person to provide support, and then what resources are available. So I have that flyer as well, and I will give you those to pass around. If you have to get the word out, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And, oh, before I forget, um, the Pink Walk that we did for, um, that the proceeds from the Pink Walk was gonna, um, support, so Journals with Healing Hearts, we're gonna, um, come back to the Commission to do a presentation to them. So once we finalize that date, we're having a meeting this Thursday. Once we finalize, uh, finalize that date, um, City Manager will get back with you to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And I'll put these flyers in the back in case, yeah. All right, with that, thank you, and have a good evening.
The second one is from Mr. Aaron Hawkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Aaron Hawkins, and I am a State Senate candidate running here in this area of Pahokee. Uh, I came out here today because I've been visiting a lot of the towns and smaller cities in my district to make sure that people understand that no matter what size or, uh, what makeup of your city or town might be, that it will have a place and a voice in my office, uh, when and if I win. I am running against Senator Gail Harrell, if anyone here is familiar with that name. Um, most of the things I'm running on are focused on affordable housing, the insurance crisis, protecting our environment and natural resources, improving income in the state of Florida, and, uh, bringing more small business to the state of Florida, increasing entrepreneurship. Uh, I'm also heavily focused on home rule, making sure that local communities can make local decisions for themselves, because we know our communities best. Uh, I am young, but I've got a Bachelor's in Economics, a Master's in International Affairs. Both of those degrees are focused on economic development. I've got three years of experience in real estate as an appraiser and a data manager. I've also got experience in data science and business and organizational management. Uh, I've been working on local affordability issues in Martin County for the last three or four years with a number of nonprofits, and my own struggles with affordable housing is what prompted me to run for office. So that is how I got into this situation. But I wanted to come out here today and provide an announcement, uh, to the, the Commissioners up here, and I hope to work with all of you closely on the issues here in Pahokee, uh, to provide any kind of support and improvement that I can from Tallahassee. I see it as my job as your State Senator to take your issues, your needs, to Tallahassee with me and make sure those are the priorities up there, so that you can affect, be effective leaders here in the local community. Um, so that is why I'm here today, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the city and let you guys know that my office is always open, and please feel free to reach out to the campaign and, uh, you know, let us know what some of your biggest concerns are, so that I can make sure that it's top of mind for me, when and if I do, uh, beat Gail Harrell and make it into the State Senate. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments, cards completed?
No, sir. That is all.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we move to presentations, and we'll have our City Manager, uh, introduce and bring up those who are speaking on the commission.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. We have Mrs. Pugh from Lutheran Services. She's served in the capacity of Family and Community Engagement Manager, and she provide an update of the offerings and speak a little bit about some of the enrollment challenges that they're having.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor and Commission. My name is Ayesha Pugh, and I am the Family and Community Engagement Manager for Lutheran Services. Um, beside me is Ms. Shawanda Phillips. She's the Center Director for our Pahokee site. So I'm here today just to, um, provide a little insight on, um, Lutheran Services and the different things that our program offer. Um, as Mr. Jackson has stated, we have been struggling with enrollment in the Glades area, uh, for a few years now. Um, so it's brought us to the point of possibly talking about reduction in the Glades area, and we don't want to do that. So we're putting it out to the community, um, what we offer, 'cause I'm not sure that all of the residents here know, um, everything that our program offers. So I'll read a little something. So Lutheran Services is a nonprofit organization that helps foster communities build healthier, happier, and hopeful futures. Um, Lutheran Services currently has Head Start sites in Tampa, Jacksonville, West Palm Beach, and the Glades area. We have three grantee sites in what they, in the Glades area, and what that means is that those are the sites that, uh, we directly fund, that, um, we have direct funding for. Um, we also have other delegate sites located at Pioneer Park and Glade View. Um, our site here in Pahokee, which is located behind the MLK Park, and we have a site in Belglade, which is Pepe Head Start, and one in South Bay. Um, Pahokee site currently serves about fifty children. Right now, we have about thirty-three children enrolled in that site. We've been out recruiting heavily to get that site filled, um, and we've just had struggles with finding kids. We know that the kids are here in the community, so we, we don't know why, you know, it's so hard for us to fill the site. Um, our program is completely free to everyone that is eligible. Uh, we do have an eligibility criteria, which, uh, most of our families in the Glades do meet our, um, criteria. Uh, we offer tuition-free education and health services to all of the families who qualify. Uh, our program is full day, which is from seven-thirty to five-thirty, and it's a year-round program. The kids get like two weeks out for summer break, um, all the major holidays, and they do get a winter break for two weeks. Um, all children receive developmental screenings within the first forty-five days of being enrolled into the program. These screenings are used to capture the child's language, language and literacy, and social and emotional development. If it is determined that services are needed for language or developmental delays, we do assist the parents in, um, getting those services free of charge. So we currently have kids that are enrolled in our program that, um, are what we call dual enroll. So they come to us in the morning. The school district sends a bus to our sites to pick those kids up. They go to the school district, the elementary sites, uh, where they may receive speech and language services, um, developmental delay services, so they receive the services on-site at the school district, and then they'll bus back to our center. Um, so a lot of parents don't know that we have all that to offer. Uh, we have a health and mental health, um, manager that's on-site in the Glades. Um, she's very good with ensuring that the kids are up to date on immunization, their shots. Um, if we foresee anything, um, that has to do with mental health, she refers the children out to receive services for that also. We also connect our families with what we call a family and community engagement advocate or specialist, um, sort of like a social worker. So they work closely with the families while they're enrolled in our centers. Um, if the families come, we have families that come in that are homeless, um, that may be in need of different services, and the family and community engagement specialist job is to assist the parents, well, not just the parent, the entire family with their needs. Uh, so we connect them with resources in the community. So anybody that needs childcare for children from six weeks to five years old, we do have, um, early Head Start at our South Bay location, and we do have a few childcare homes in South Bay area. Pepe and Pahokee, they have to be three to five years old. Um, some of the things that they would need to bring with them to see if they qualify for the program would be their birth, the child's birth certificate or passport, parent's ID or passport, proof of address within the last thirty days, um, updated immunization and physical, and their previous year tax return. Um, if they don't have the tax return available, they can go to the Social Security Office and ask for a wage printout. Um, you do not have to be employed to receive childcare with our program. Um, so if you know anybody that needs childcare, just please spread the word and encourage parents to come in and take advantage of the services. It's a great program, and we don't wanna see it go. But if we don't meet funding enrollment, that's a possibility. Anybody have any questions, ma'am?
Do you have any flyers anything about, um?
I can make sure that, um, you guys, I can send flyers to the City Clerk and make sure that you guys. You have any, one thing? And this is the director, um, at our Pahokee site.
Yes, I'm new. Um, I would like, um, you guys, like, try to help, work together, you know, keeping the center open for the kids. Um, I've been doing this twenty-plus years, and I hate to see it go. I've only been there like a couple months, and I wanna make a difference. And I've been, myself and my team, we actually go out in the community, you know, trying to build community partners, um, with the community, the parents, you know, so I would like you guys help.
And one last thing, they do not have to be, um, a U.S. citizen. So we have a lot of, of parents that come in, um, they are U.S. citizens. They do not have to be citizens to protect in our program as well.
Do y'all have some flyers that we can?
I'll make sure that I send them to the City Clerk.
While they here, I wish, I will say this. Uh, one of their staff asked that I would ask the City Manager and entire City Commission to write a support letter on their behalf, so their center may remain open. And I told her that I would announce that at our upcoming commission meeting. So my request and my, to you all, is to consider writing a support letter, so they can submit it to their administration. Myself and the City Manager met with the administration, and they're kind of leaning heavily toward closing that, uh, facility.
But I will say that we do have time to prove that the kids are here. Um, we will be monitoring the site to, to see if we can meet full enrollment from now until December. So we're out working, trying to make sure that we can meet that goal before December.
And your full enrollment is what, level fifty?
Fifty, and right now we have about thirty, thirty-three kids, thirty-four kids.
Okay.
Sure, I got three in my church.
And as I asked the administration, how can the city help? You have any suggestion what we can do, if we can do anything?
Just spread the word. Let the residents know about the opportunities that are there, and, because there are great opportunities at the Head Start Center, and I don't think a lot of parents know everything that we have to offer at Head Start Center. Like, anything, any type of, um, disabilities or anything, they catch it at that age and start working with the kids. So by the time they get to kindergarten, they may no longer need the services anymore.
So let me ask you, you say you have, the kids don't have to be citizens. So how would you determine the parent, if the parent are a citizen, uh, how would you?
So most of our, um, families, the parents may not be citizens, but the kids were born here.
Okay.
And even if the kids aren't citizens, like I've seen, um, birth certificates from out of the country, we translate the birth certificate, um, to make sure that it's the child and the age, and we bring those children in. And the parents just need some type of identification, like a passport. They don't have to have, um.
They don't have income, or you have?
No, they don't have to have income.
Okay.
And Ms., Ms. Pugh, if they, if, if kids are living with their grandparents, but they don't have, you know how sometimes the grandparents just have the kids, do they have to have legal custody of them if they wanted to bring them into the program, but they don't have legal custody of them, but they live with them?
Not legal custody, but we would have to have something from the parent that's notarizing that, um, they're authorizing the grandparent, um, to have guardianship over the child. It doesn't have to be from the court, but it does need to be notarized from them.
Okay. So once we get some flyers, you probably can leave some over in Parks and Rec and different areas where kids and parents come. That would be good, okay.
And I have spoken with someone over in Parks and Rec about, um, referring, like, some of their families that come in, the school age, I mean, the children at our age, and we refer families that are, you know, that can fit their program as well. So, anyway, get to that.
One idea that comes to mind, if, if we're able to schedule a, uh, a town hall meeting and feature Lutheran Services as the presenters in that meeting, it'll give them, uh, an audience that they can, uh, present to and provide a, a litany of all of your services. So I'd be willing to work with you. If it's not a town hall meeting, it could be just an overall outreach meeting, uh, explaining the importance of the services, and the services are here. Because as you mentioned, most times, uh, families and people in the community don't really understand to the degree the amount of resources that's available. And I think we had an opportunity to learn a little bit from on that last week with the breast cancer, uh, program. I think, uh, when and if they are able to understand that, then your chances increase in having them enroll. So I'd be really interested in helping you to make that a reality.
And we appreciate all the help. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next presenter would be Mr. Mendez, the Creative Director of R dot Art and Creativity Agency. Mr. Mendez is not a stranger to the Commission. Uh, his work here over the summer with the, uh, students in the summer program through our Parks and Rec, uh, was very successful. That's a program that painted benches and put it, distributed them throughout the community. He's here to provide an update and show, uh, what he's been up to since he was here last. Mr. Mendez.
Thank you for having me back. Um, just wanted to give a brief update, um, and also thank, um, the City of Parks and Rec, and also Mr. Michael Jackson and all of his, uh, staff. I believe many of you saw the video by now. And, um, I have a proposal also. This is a brief overview of what we got going on. And I also wanted to, um, show the, uh, commit, uh, the community of Pahokee, um, of the video. And premiere, I guess, here. I don't know if it's too popular yet. I don't know if it's too popular yet. Can we turn the volume? Maybe it's my video? Well, technology, like it fails sometimes, right? The video highlights the process of how the tables were custom-made. Um, it highlights the process of the four classes that we went out, uh, the four classes that the students were able to experience. And it really highlighted the day of the, um, the day that we created the tables collectively with, uh, five teaching artists and myself, and how we made it a fun day to watch, uh, their artworks come to life onto these picnic tables that now live in the community. They also had a chance to learn how important it is to vote. Um, there was about twenty-eight designs, and out of the twenty-eight designs, six of them were chosen. And, uh, one of the major highlights for me personally is that five of the six students were, uh, boys. And me typically working as an after-school arts teacher, um, a lot of times, um, the girls are more into the arts, and I think that, that says a lot about the difference of, uh, communities from the coast to the Glades. I think that there isn't that bias, or, or maybe it's looked at as a less than, and it's not, uh, so macho to create art. A lot of their, a lot of their, a lot of their, um, personalities, and definitely I will say, uh, as you know, when you play sports, it's a confident builder. When you, uh, create artwork, it's a confidence builder. Um, being active, if you use all these practices, give you confidence.
Kids play, and a lot of times it's playing outside, running around. But play is important with creativity. Play is important to be able to use your hand, and it also helps the development skills.
You can see the confidence, um. When I show a couple of the students and we took pictures that you see at the end of this video, uh, Ms. Tasha was like, you're famous, it's like, I've been famous. So again, that, that confidence that's already been built, uh, with the sports. And in this interview, um, the young man said, uh, that he's hopefully going to be famous. So I, I feel like there, the community is definitely, we know, and, and we've seen the, uh, designs in the tables. We saw the, um, the football community, right? So I'm here to see, um, what's next. Previously to before, uh, I came in with the concept already done. Um, I, I know, uh, I'm fortunate, I'm to know that a lot of communities need these tables. So I know we were going to be able to work with, work together. And the conversation started with Mr., um, Mr. Greg, uh, on wanting to build a, um, wanting to create a mural. And I think, uh, Mr. Bolden had, was trying to go there, and I said, "Give me some time, we, we got some stuff in the burner now." Um, so the next is hopefully a proposal, and I'm here to speak to you about what that might look like. Again, the design's going to come from kids, students. When they come and cheer or play, I think it's important to be able to see your artwork in the community. Again, it builds that confidence, right? It, maybe sports isn't the only thing that you're going to create. And these are just some samples of murals. This is just completely, a couple of my AI, just to, just to give you an idea of, of what that looks like. But in order for me to work together on this project, it's a little more in detail. What does that mean? It's a partnership with Children's Services Council, um, City of Pahokee and myself. So what is Children's, uh, Services Council providing? They're providing materials for our, our classes for middle school or high school. So because this is a mural, and the proposed location is the south wall of the, uh, football field, obviously the one behind the bleachers, um, on the right side, which is about thirty feet, maybe longer, and about twenty feet high. Um, we would like it, obviously, we would like an intricate design. So I would say that middle schoolers or high schoolers would be best to create this design. Uh, so we can maybe come up with a design that makes everyone happy. And again, I'm a believer of the voting system, and give everybody a shot for them and within their peers to pick what that looks like. Um, they will provide teaching artists to guide students, um, during the mural design. They will provide all materials for the community paint day and teaching artists to come out, to guide community participants. So you're like, guide community participants, what does that look like? So this is a process that I believe it hasn't been used here. I, uh, went to, uh, Mural Arts in Philadelphia, and it is similar to, uh, wallpaper, but it's a different cloth. So the, so it would, once the design is set, obviously it would be as big as this, uh, room. And in this room, we do a paint-by-numbers, similar to like we did on the tables. And all those numbers have a key, uh, have a key person, and they go see the key, and they, they give you the number, and you find the number, and you paint that number. So it's like a huge paint-by-numbers. Um, if you saw in the video, my assistant was guiding, you know, giving the students what color they needed to paint, uh, the, the, uh, the number. Um, so that would, that would require a community day, and that's open to anybody. Once the design is set, ideally, of course, the students would come in with their families, and they would get a brush, and they would help paint that part of the mural. It would take at least four to six hours, maybe longer, because it, again, it's large. Um, they would pay for the permission of the installation of the final mural. Again, they would document the mural process like we did here, and I would be, um, directing it creatively. What are we asking from the City of Pahokee? Um, permission to work with the City of Pahokee again. Um, space for design, uh, workshop, ideally before the hurricane had came. Uh, we, we try to, uh, set up appointments now, I mean, uh, set up, we've come here for a month, uh, so time is a little against me, but I don't think it's impossible. Um, space to design, uh, the workshop maybe during the winter break. Um, prepare wall services to install the mural. I already expected the, uh, wall, and it's, the, the paint looks fresh, and, uh, the wall is, uh, looks like it's up to date. Uh, space for a lift or a scaffold to install the mural, so we would need space for that. Um, City of Pahokee to host a community painting day with their staff. So that means, again, um, let's keep the community together. It would look kind of like a block party. Provide food and drinks for the attendees, uh, maybe some, some activities, and then also make sure everyone gets their hand at painting the, uh, the mural before it goes up. Um, tables and chairs needed for painting and families. Um, a DJ or music to keep the vibe up. And I think I said that, children's activities. Any questions? That was quick. Um, I don't know if it's in your budget. I don't think it's asking for much. It's mostly spacing, just to make sure that, once that wall or mural, once that wall is covered, um, that it matches whatever the design is, because I know it's brown now.
What wall are you looking at over in Parks and Rec?
Uh, yeah, right here, um, in the football field. So, uh, behind the, uh, I think it's bleachers, right? There's bleachers there. Yeah, so if you're, if you're, if you're looking in the center of the football field, and you're looking south this way, um, it's a wall.
Oh, on the home side?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a hallway in the center, and then on the right side, it's huge. It's a big old space. Would be, there's, there's a lot of space to create something there.
I don't think you'd be asking what.
I'm not, I think. Any questions?
So one of those would be the, the, you'd be voting for one of those pictures to be?
No, no, they would come up with their own. Those were just for your, for your minds to raise. I, who knows what they want to come up with? But I feel like we have a theme going on here in the community. And it also fits that, uh, fits the area. I mean, when, once we do some brainstorming, we have to dig deep. And again, I, I would like to work with middle school students, um, to get some deeper, more detailed designs, um, maybe think of some of the Hall of Famers and just, what the history of, um, uh, Pahokee, and how are we going to write that in a, in a mural?
Do we have it in the book? Are we able to request of the city manager to see if we can find that amount in the budget to proceed with this, uh, city attorney? Or how do I need to do this? Can it be form of motion from the floor now?
It would need to be a future agenda item, yes.
Someone can add it on there, agenda item, okay, thank you.
Do I come back, does that mean?
Yes, you can come back. You don't necessarily have to come back, but we'll vote on it and at least have it added to our
Excellent, sorry, I don't know.
Agenda to be able to have the city manager authorize the movement of that.
Great, and I'll start working on my end, because I have to give the numbers to the CSC. See if we get the funding also. So this is the first step to work towards, um, the partnership.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I read it, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the presentations. Mayor, we have a proclamation for Breast, Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay, and we'll have our city attorney read the proclamation on the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second leading cause of cancer deaths among, among American women. And whereas the significance of mammography and X-ray of the breast cannot be overstated, it is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. This early detection coupled with improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations through their unwavering dedication are at the forefront of the battle against breast cancer during the month of October, as we acknowledge and appreciate the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors, a testament to the progress that has made and a beacon of hope for a better future. Now therefore, with unwavering support for those who continue to cope with breast cancer, I Keith W. Bab, Junior Mayor of the City of Pahokee, Florida, on behalf of the City Commission, extend our deepest respect for the survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. I so doing, in so doing, we call upon our community to stand together as your support is critical, and hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in official recognition, whereof I adhere to set my hand and seal the, for the City of Pahokee to be affixed this eighth day of October twenty twenty-four. And this, this would have been the previous agenda, so it's the twenty-second day of October twenty twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this is, um, signed by Keith W. Bab, Junior, and Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Shankoeta Cowan-Williams, and Commissioner Everett D. McPherson, Senior.
I'll entertain a motion for the approver and the official, uh, accepting of the proclamation.
Everybody move that we would accept the proclamation for October Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Pherson, Senior, that we accept his proclamation, uh, presented. Call for questions, hearing honor, ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Would you all join me down on the floor so we can present this, I guess, to Ms. Ifield?
Second, yes.
I just need to represent, do you look, and you had somebody supposed to be getting Ms. Vice Mayor? Okay, if you come down.
I can't do all that standing.
I want to have, uh, Vice Mayor presenting the proclamation. You don't have to.
Okay, I would like to present this to Annie Ifield from yesterday's, who's always, uh, receiving all of you, uh, presentation. She's a great community leader. Thank you, Annie, for accepting this. Also, uh, for the, uh, proclamation for October Breast Cancer Month, which we know they have a lot, uh, resident even in our community that was and is affected by this disease. So we'd just like to present this to Annie Ifield, who are the proclamation for this.
Hey, you can't, you can't photobomb.
You can get cold up there all of a sudden, and I didn't bring no jacket. It wasn't that cold the first time.
Can I say some real quick? I, I would really want to acknowledge the other partners, because this was not a, a Help Your Glades event. Uh, I was asked if I can help, and so I, I came and provided support. But really, Bolden Community Impact, Empower Healthcare, myself, Bridges at Pahokee, there was a lot of folks that came together to make, uh, what we, Pahokee Church of God as well. There was a lot of folks, and as well as residents, that came together to make this happen. It really started with, um, Empower Healthcare during their annual, uh, Women's Lunch and Learn. And so it started with that, and then, uh, Vice Mayor Mervin, um, shared with me that she wanted to do something around breast cancer awareness. And so she asked me if I knew of anybody who, who would be interested in, um, coming together to make it happen. So it, it really was a community and group effort. So I would be remiss if I did not recognize the other folks, because we could not have done, I could not have done it by myself, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have our consent agenda. It's only one item on that. Well, actually consists of two, but it's a resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-five.
Resolution?
It is a resolution of the City Commission approving the cancellation of the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four and the December twenty-four, twenty twenty-four City Commission meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, move that we would accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-five.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the acceptance of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-five. Call for questions. Hearing honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we'll have, we don't have any public hearings in our ordinance. No, we actually have ordinances. We have one ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight on second reading, city attorney.
An ordinance by the City Commission of the City of Pahokee. City Commission amending the City of Pahokee's Code of Ordinances to update the date of the flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps to reformat local amendments to the state building code, providing for applicability, severability, repealer, and an effective date.
City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight?
Yes, sir, Mayor Commission, this is the second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-four, uh, oh eight. And as reference, it updates, it's an update of the flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps, which reformats the amendments to the Florida Building Code into plain language format. Staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh eight on its second reading.
Thank you. At this time, I would open a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight. Are there anyone in the audience that wish to address this ordinance? Are there anyone in the audience that wish to address this ordinance? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. City Commission having heard Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-five properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-five. Call for questions?
He said forty-five oh eight.
Forty-five oh eight, I'm sorry.
Twenty Twenty Four oh eight.
Twenty Twenty Four.
Oh eight.
Oh eight. Call for question. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll have resolutions. We have several resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-six, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving the Pahokee Middle Senior High School Twenty Twenty Four Homecoming Parade and authorizing an application for a parade permit from the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution approves the parade, homecoming parade permit for the November seventh, reschedule November seventh, homecoming game. Game has been rescheduled again due to weather conditions associated with Hurricane Milton. Staff recommends approval based on the completion of all the preliminary forms and formats. That includes Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office sign-off and additional sign-offs from different agencies. Once approved, if approved tonight, this will be a part of an overall permit application that goes to the Florida Department of Transportation, which finally authorizes and approves the parade that's scheduled for November seventh.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having heard Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-six properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
May I move that we will accept Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-six?
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-six. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-seven, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number thirty-one to the contract between Rosso Site Development, Inc., relating to the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project, providing for representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, Mayor Commission. Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-seven is a request to approve change order thirty-one to the contract between Rosso Site Development and the City of Pahokee as it pertains to Barfield Highway Reconstruction. There's a need to revise the original plan, and this seventh edition of this plan change encompasses plugging existing drainage boxes S one forty-eight and S one fifty and coring new inverts S one forty-seven and S one forty-nine as provided in your backup. Palm Beach Water Utilities granted concurrency and approval for reimbursement for the total amount of three thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-seven.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having heard Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-seven properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
May I move that we will accept Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-seven?
It has been moved by Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-seven. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commission. Resolution passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll have Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-eight.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number thirty-two to the contract between the City of Pahokee and Rosso Site Development, Inc., and pertaining to the reconstruction of the City of Pahokee Barfield Highway sidewalk as set forth in Exhibit A here to providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-eight considers change order number thirty-two, which highlights sidewalk improvement at two fifty-five Barfield Highway. The sidewalk ties in from two fifty-five, that's the address, at three feet below the sidewalk in the right-of-way. The contract will tie into the owner's driveway with a fourth feet sidewalk pending obtaining the right-of-way permit application from the property owner through the city's permitting department if approved. FDOT has granted concurrency and approval for this additional cost of six thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-eight.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having heard Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-eight properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-eight.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-eight. Call for questions?
Yes, I have several questions. Has this scope of work been done yet, City Manager? Do you know?
No, no, it's not been, hadn't been done yet.
Okay, so this is what we're approving for it to be done?
Yes.
Okay, because I guess my question is the, is this going to come back to us? Because the agreement from the, I see it says that we have to have some type of agreement from the owner. So do we have that agreement yet that we can see what it is that we're voting on, that they're agreeing upon? Or is it going to come back to us? Is this just to go through a process? Because there's a process for this, correct?
The process is outlined in the city's permitting process. What you're referring to is a act of city staff. If approved, this will have to be permitted, and permitting processes necessarily have to come back to the commission for their approval. It's a staff-driven process. So once this is approved, if approved tonight, we will engage the property owner, identify, and make sure the owner of the property is the owner of the property, is pulling the permit. And through that process, we'll be able to provide a permit for the work to be done. So this permitting process is post-approval by the commission.
Okay, that's what I was asking, because we were approving it, but I didn't see anything in here letting us know it was a process. I mean, I called to verify to find out because I didn't see an agreement or anything, and I didn't, you know, we get to change orders. I just didn't really know what it is that they was asking to do, so that's why I was asking, because I didn't know what the process was, so that's why I was asking.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is it clear? You understand?
Yeah, that it's a process and staff will take care of it. We're just approving for them to be able to do it.
In addition to questions, hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll have Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash fifty, City Attorney.
Forty-nine, sir. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number thirty-three to the contract between the City of Pahokee and Rosso Site Development, Inc., and pertaining to the reconstruction of the City of Pahokee Barfield Highway and a driveway apron as set forth in Exhibit A here to providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, Mayor. This Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-nine consider change orders, change order thirty-three. This particular change order is a little different. It's for the driveway apron at three forty-nine South Barfield Highway. The apron was installed per the plan, which means that it was installed at, as the plan was designed for the roadway. The apron is smaller than the driveway, which ties into the apron. Necessary work is needed to correct the issue, which will expand the apron to match the existing driveway width. These tasks include removing the curb. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-nine.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having heard Resolution Twenty Four dash forty-nine properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
May I move that we will accept Resolution Twenty Twenty Four forty-nine?
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden that we adopt in Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash forty-nine. Call for questions?
Yes. So this is saying that the city, we're responsible for paying this?
Yes.
And so I have, so how did this become? Can you just explain to me? How is it that we're responsible for this and three forty-nine, is this, this on Barfield Highway? Is it a house? Is it, and explain, how did the city take on this responsibility? Or how did the city, it becomes a city responsibility if we went according to the plan?
Okay. The plan as presented, from my understanding, it was done some time ago. This particular residence, three forty-nine, came into the city and pulled a permit prior to Barfield Highway being under construction. That permit was approved to allow him to build a site, a driveway with the width and everything associated with what was there prior to. So he had a legal permit to extend his driveway from a width standpoint. Post permitting of that process, the city design did not include what had happened there through his original and legal permitting process. It wasn't approved, it wasn't included in the overall design. Because the overall design designed for all homes with the same length, same width of driveway throughout the run of the highway. Once that was done, it was realized that he was, he would be losing a part of his driveway. City administration at the time agreed to, with the change order, allow this to happen post, after it realized that it was left out of the design. This amount is included in the city's budget. It takes in consideration under its, under its road and construction line item. Is included, included twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents to make this available, to have this done, because it was known from February of last year that this would be a cost that the city would have to bear.
So someone from the city, I guess I'm asking, who does this scope of work went out and looked at this, or whoever did the original plan, the engineer who did the plan for the city? They went out and they looked at this and agreed to all of this? Or did the person, because I'm not sure who it is, is a resident?
Yes.
The resident just came in and they said this is what took place, or I'm just trying to figure out who on the city part saw?
It's every, every change order that comes before the commission, a couple of different things happen. City staff takes a look, city engineering takes a look, Department of Transportation takes a look, and a consultant for the state takes a look. And all the parties would have to agree whether the change order is approved or they recommend it for approval. So all of those entities took a look based on what was obvious after the design and the road work was done. The resident obviously knew that he ended up with a driveway a lot smaller than he had prior to the construction taking place.
And just one more question. I know I think I've asked you this before. All of, everybody agreed. I'm like today, I know you say a lot of the money come from FDOT, and FDOT has approved it. From now on, when we get change orders, is it possible that we can get where FDOT? I know you all say it's not coming out of the city budget and they agreed to this. That we could at least see that documentation, because now the city is, you know, I just see, we're having to pay for this now. So I would just like to start seeing where FDOT has signed off, because I know we always say it ain't coming out of the city money, it's FDOT paying for it. I would just like to start seeing that, because I haven't seen any documentation where, from FDOT. Approve, you know, we are proving these, but that FDOT has seen all these change orders that we're doing, and they're saying it's okay. It's possible.
I can provide in a different format, but you, it's provided in the change order request where the party sign off on.
Where? Where is it? Where is that at? Because maybe I missed it.
They're, they're in all of your backup. They're in all your change orders. It's called, it's called a site development request. Request for change order.
Says authorized signature by?
I'll just give you an example. Obviously, this was not one because it's city funded. But if you go back to one resolution prior to, if you, let me give you a page number. Page number seventy-eight, and then you look at seventy-nine. On page seventy-nine, it's there. And I think it's also provided on seventy-seven.
The Patrick Montgomery guy? The Patrick Montgomery guy?
Patrick Montgomery is a client. He is the person, the CEI for the City of Pahokee. Blair Simpson.
You said page seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine, and again on seventy-eight.
So that's the Blair.
Seventy-seven.
That's the Blair Simpson guy?
Yes. No, that's the Blair Simpson lady.
Lady. So that's FDOT?
No, that's, that's Rosso Development.
Right, I'm talking about FDOT. Well, FDOT, I know that FDOT signed and said that it's okay that all of these change orders need to be taken place.
Okay. Look on, look on page seventy-seven. Under the second half of the page, if a claim is made that the above change have affected contract price or contract times, any claim for a change order based thereon will involve one or more of the following methods of determining the effect of the change. And on the methods of determining the change in this particular one, it says lump sum. It's increased by six thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents, and it's cost covered by FDOT.
Right, when they sign, I'm just asking, they sign, that's their signature at the bottom where it says authorized signature? That's what I'm asking for. I just wanted to see what DOT, because this form has City of Pahokee. Is that made up by the City of Pahokee? I'm just saying something from FDOT.
We cannot move forward with the process if FDOT don't approve it. That's what I'm, if you want to, if you're asking for another signature from FDOT saying that they approve.
That they approve, yes. That's all I was asking for, yes.
I can make that request. I'm not sure if they're willing to provide that amount of detail, but I'll, I'll request that.
Question, what, what form or what method do they let us know that they?
Yeah.
What's form and method?
Yeah, yes.
They see the same, they see the same form. They email, we request through a portal, and that portal tracks the project, it tracks all of the change orders. It tracks, it tracks all of the activity for the grant. So at any time, if we needed any documents from the portal, we sign into the portal. We being the Office of Community and Economic Development, and we were able to pull up any documents that we needed necessary. And that's where you get a lot of the backup information from.
And so they don't say yea or nay. They just look in the portal to see what it is that you're doing. They don't say, okay, yea or nay, this is a go.
Absolutely, they have to.
So that's what I was asking for. Yeah, that's what I was saying, where they say yea or nay, that couldn't be printed from the portal to go along with the documents? That's all I was asking.
I'll make the request. What you asking, without looking at the portal, I'm not sure if that specific form is there. But I'll make the request if it's not. Ms. Adams, is there anything you want to add to maybe clar, help clarify our answer to Commissioner's question?
Good evening, Mayor Commission. To answer that question, we can provide email concurrency. But also, when you look at page seventy-nine, I think on page seventy-nine, whether it's. But also, when you look at page seventy-nine, I think on page seventy-nine, whether it's Palm Beach County F D O T, we either have our project manager, um, to sign off, or either Palm Beach County or the signs off. And so usually, it is backup documentation that says concurrency from, I think, last commission meeting, a couple of commission meetings ago. We had, um, change orders, and, and that email was concurrency and it said, uh, change order number whatever. Whether it's for asphalt, concrete, and it says concurrency, but we will provide, um, I'll get you the backup for that.
Right, I feel more comfortable, because I'm going to be honest. I feel uncomfortable keep agreeing to this, and I know we're doing a lot of change orders and it says F, F dot paying for it, F dot paying for it, F dot paying for it. But whenever, I, I've never seen any documentation with nothing signed from F dot. So I'm just saying, if they are proving this as a commission, I would just like to see that, yes, this has gone up to them, and yes, they have approved this. Because right now, I think I've asked before, we've done a lot of change orders, and I'm going to be honest, I'm just concerned, they're from two years ago. And I'm just trying to figure out if they've been paid for already, who, who gave authority to pay for them? And you're now presenting them to us and giving us the paperwork. I don't really have any background knowledge on it. I, I just don't continuously feel comfortable to keep, um, saying yes to these change orders. And I know you're saying that if we don't pay them, that they are not going to move forward, but they've done the work already. Who approved the work?
So every, uh, document that comes before you, work has not been done. And as Mr. Jackson just said, uh, those items have not been corrected. Before we can move forward, we have to, whether it is concurrents, email, or phone calls, we are in constant communication, communication with F D O T, as well as Palm Beach County. And those documents, they see when we're on progress and meeting calls. F D O T Site Inspector, who does not work for the city, is on site. So he sees all that. So all those change orders also have to go to Palm Beach, I mean, to, whether it's Palm Beach County or F D O T. As well as when we submit pay applications, on those pay applications, it has the change orders included in the invoices. So on there, the amount is calculated. So anything that is not approved, we don't bring forth to commission at all. If F D O T or Palm Beach County has not approved those items, we don't bring it to commission, because we know we don't have the funding to cover it.
What, what the question is, we just requesting additional documents.
Yes, sir. As I said, we, we can get, uh, concurrents.
Showing that F dot actually approved it.
So it will say F D O T.
I'm trying to simplify this.
It says F D O T concurrency, and it has F D O T's email address. E, F D O T sometimes does not actually sign the document, but the concurrency comes along. Palm Beach County Water, they actually sign their documents, and they send them back.
And now, you just said that some of these are not, um, which I don't know which ones, I have to ask. Has it been, um, you know, done already? Because you all are saying, well, if you don't approve it, um, they won't move forward. So I don't know what they've done and what they haven't done, but my concern is still these dates. So if it hasn't been done, I guess, I guess I've asked before, what's the process? Some of this is two years behind. Why is it taking, I, I guess I'm not understanding, why is it taking so long to? If, if they see the work need to be done in twenty twenty-one, what took so long in twenty twenty-four?
To, to clarify that. So when a change order comes forth from Barf, from Rosso, it doesn't come directly to the city right then? That's why we hired a CEI. That CEI is an engineer. He has the profession to do that. And if he does not feel like that is something that needs to be justified or a good reason, it does not move forward. But we're in that conversation, so we know what's taking place. If it is for something that, okay, I really suggest that.
Don't talk about the ones we getting with those dates on there.
That's what I'm saying. So if, because it could be from the past, and you're just now getting it. So if those R F I's, because they're R F I's, they're called R F I's before they've become change orders. So if those have not moved forward, if Palm Beach County or other F D O T is meaning to look at that and said something like, we're not ready to move forward on that, let's push this aside, then we bring the other ones forth, because we think, okay, we'll move forward. Then it gets to the point of sometimes with those, we've gone through transitions, things have been happening. We went through an audit with J. Law.
Okay, I got that. I'm going to talk about these dates, because I kind of figured that was going to come up.
That's what I'm saying. So with that audit, we couldn't bring, because we weren't being released funds, we couldn't bring some of those change orders for, for if funding had been, not been released. So you, you may have dates from the past, or change orders that not, were not able to move forward.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Adams. And just to reiterate something of what she just said, and not to continue to talk about it. But as a commission and as a staff, we know that we have had, uh, challenges, um, with getting things approved. At one point, it, I think in my research for almost like a nine-month period, nothing was done, uh, in regards to these projects. No action, no anything was done from the commission or staff level to any substance, to any, with any substance. So you have a nine-month period where very little, if no activity of anything had been done. Coupled with the fact that, uh, the city's funds had been frozen through the state of Florida, which is the grantor of the funds for this particular project, for an extended period of time until, until the audit was finally, finally released, completed to finally release those funds. The day that those funds were released technically does not translate to when those funds were available. We're just beginning to see the funds come through in a way that's measurable and in a way that we can say that we can finally move this project to a point of completion. So those are some of the reasons, coupled with some of the other things for internal, uh, inter-agency coordination that Ms. Adams explained, is the reasoning behind a lot of the change orders not being processed when you see the dates on the change order request form.
I just want to say for the record, Mr. Jackson, I, I understand everything that you were saying, and I did some research as well. When we were saying all of this that we had, that was going on, the issues we had went on from September twenty twenty-one to March the eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. Okay? That was for that short period of time. But I'm saying, some of these change orders that we have gotten have been prior to that and after that. So maybe I'll accept the fact with the audit, but that's, I'm just saying, I, for myself, I have been trying to understand it for myself, so that I can feel comfortable when I'm voting on this. I understand that it has to be done. I understand that for myself. And because I had never seen any paperwork signed from F dot, because I actually would like for F dot to come and give us an update on the project, to be honest. Because I'm voting on this based on, I hear what you all are saying, F dot is paying for it, but I'm just saying for me. Everybody else may not agree to that.
When you say for you, uh, we want to make sure that you understand, but it may be a situation where you don't understand, because we're explaining it over and over and over again.
Not where I understand it, though.
Yeah, but what I'm saying to you, then there, this, it becomes my responsibility to explain it in a different way, so you can understand it. Because what we're explaining to you will not change. It's, it's what happened, it's the facts. So I have a responsibility to, uh, provide it in a way that you can better understand it, and I'll take that responsibility.
Okay, well, just my last question then. Is it possible that F dot can come in? Maybe since I'm not understanding the explanation that I'm getting, can a representative from them come in and explain it so that I could understand it? Or a phone call that I could send in on or something?
What is it that you don't understand?
We're going to move forward with the meeting, but I'm just saying that I'm voting on it, and I'm still not understanding a lot of these change orders and being taken so long.
Okay, my question is, in order for me to get someone to respond from outside of the city, I need to be able to understand what I'm asking them to respond to.
And we can, what, I can call you and talk to you.
Are there?
Yes, I'm just trying to get some clarification. As far as the approval is concerned from F dot, um, I'm still a little bit puzzled. What method do they communicate with the city that this is approved? And what I'm asking, I guess my question would be, is can that document, whatever method they use to notify the city that we approved these funds for this particular project, that that can be added to the, um, the documents?
Okay. Again, Commissioner, you have that. I'll see if I can get it in a different format for you, but it's captured in your back, in your backup information. When it says F D O T concurrency, that means that F D O T agrees with what's been presented. Whether, depending upon them having, they didn't have a hard signature.
Yeah, that's what I want to see from them on their letter here, because who's writing that it was concurrency?
That's the form from the system, correct?
Yes, it's in the portal. And I'm not sure, well, I'm almost sure that they don't have someone just signing consent orders. They have a process, and it's a portal that we use that's used for all projects, not just the City of Pohokee projects, but all F D O T projects, uh, indicating if they approve or don't approve. We make a request through the, uh, the construction company. Rosso Development comes in and says, okay, we see that we need to have a change order for A B C. Okay, we receive that request, and then upon receiving that request, we speak directly to the city's inspector, who's expecting the project, basically saying, Mr. Inspector, this is what developer is proposing based on the original plans and all of the documents associated with this particular contract. As an engineer, as an expert, do you agree or disagree with what's being requested? They then in turn say yea or nay. They'll always say yes, sometimes they say no. If they say no, we go back to Mr. Developer and say, no, this is something that we can't approve. Once the CEI from the city suggests that it's something that's in reason and within reason, we then go to D O T. We make a request initially verbally through the Office of Community and Economic Development, and then we go in and we make requests through the portal. That request is then considered, and the request is, there's a couple of ways of doing the request. Couple of things that we're looking at as a result of the request. We're looking for them to say, yes, this is something that we can agree with, because there, in projects, you do have changes. So if they say yes, and, and them saying yes, they're also saying, yes, we agree with in concept that it needs to change. But the other part of it is that we not only agree, we agree to pay for it. So when that is done, only when that is done, then we then come back to the commission, make a request through a change order that's gone through that whole entire process, and bring it before you for your consideration. Now, to answer your question, after they say through their portal and through communications and signing off on documents, that they concur, I will now have to ask them to see if they can affix a signature to something to say that they occur, that they concur. And I will ask that.
But it doesn't have to be a signature. I'm not saying, Mr. Jackson, it doesn't have to even be a signature. Whatever you have in the portal where they've said yes, I'm sure they have to have a date stamped there or something where they say yes. That's all I'm saying.
But what, what you're doing, I think, and this is, I think this is, I think this is where the confusion, the fusion comes.
Don't do that.
I think this is where the confusion comes.
No, it's not too much. Maybe it is. Maybe we wouldn't be where we were if the commission.
I think this is where the confusion comes. And, and it's, it is, it is, if you're not an engineer, if you're not working, used to working on projects of this nature, if you're not used to governmental projects, um, it can be confusing, very, very confusing. Because it takes me a lot of time to go through and understand to a degree that I can come back and explain it to you. So if it's foreign to you, if it's new to you, it's, it can be confusing. But what you can't do, you can't compare a government project to any other thing that you do on a regular basis, because it's not comparable. It not, it's not comparing apples to apples. So when you're asking me to have a representative from D O T to make a printout of something that they don't possibly have, and if they do, I'll ask to be a part of something that they're already approved. It kind of suggests that, I won't say that, but I, I'll ask for it. I'll ask for it.
Are there any additional questions? Harry and I, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine passed by unanimous vote. City Attorney, question for guidance. Next we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty. This is a resolution of the City Commission approving the contract of Michael E. Jackson, which we had a workshop and haven't completed. What would be the proper way? Do we still address this, vote it down or up? Or what is other suggestion?
Yes, sir. The commission has indicated that it desires to set a special meeting, um, soon, possibly this week regarding this issue. You can defer this matter, vote to defer this matter until that meeting, which will be set soon. And then you will deal with the, um, in a special meeting, you can deal with it, not do it as a workshop. You can actually do it as a, a, a special meeting where you will discuss the issue, and then you can have the item on the agenda so that you can vote on it. It won't require you coming back next month or anything like that. So you could actually set it as a special meeting with the only issue being this contract. And then that way you dispose of, you know, understanding it and voting on it at the same time.
Okay. Commissioner, we discussed a date, and I think the suggestion was try, is following Tuesday, which would be next Tuesday. If that's a date is appropriate for everyone, I would.
Depends on the time, what time?
We can do that. It's six o'clock in the east. We need to come up with a date. I didn't want to call it a special meeting if we're not here to participate.
Next Wednesday?
So Monday evening won't do, because we have.
I have physical therapy on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, so, and I guess one person that doesn't.
No, we want everyone here on, on this, uh, contract. It would be helpful. Say Monday, though, but are you finished before six?
No, my physical therapist is not till five.
So next Thursday?
I have to wait till I get off work.
Next Thursday.
Plus, I got something going on. I can probably reschedule what I have going on on Mondays, but.
Next Thursday.
Is next Thursday a good date for everyone? I'm just trying, we, we're just hoping we can get a, a call, not so much a call, but everyone should be here.
My physical therapist is on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
When is our next regular scheduled meeting? Not that we have to wait in, but.
It's November, um, November twenty-sixth, because the twelfth meeting is canceled.
That would be the.
Okay.
It'll be when? November what?
Twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth, that's the next scheduled regular meeting.
Oh, because we just canceled the twelfth.
So next Tuesday, the twenty-ninth?
Next Tuesday, the twenty-ninth?
It's twenty-nine.
What's going on the fifth?
When your therapist is, Monday, every Monday?
Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
So Monday, twenty-eighth, you have therapy?
Every Monday, every Wednesday, every Friday.
The fifth and Wednesday?
That's election day.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So next Thursday? The twenty-ninth.
What's wrong with next Tuesday?
Oh, two, yeah, the twenty-ninth.
This election day, they say, they say that's election.
Originally talking about.
No, next Tuesday is the twenty-ninth.
This election, right?
Yeah, next Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. Well, that's the original date.
Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, we have a special meeting starting at six.
Yes.
Everyone agree with that? Okay. Attorney, we need to now vote on that.
Well, the, a part of the, um, motion would be to defer it until that time. Is there any way, it could be a little bit earlier, like I heard somebody say it's so late, maybe five o'clock on next Tuesday, twenty?
Five o'clock would be fine. If, if five o'clock is fine, I'll.
It's not going to work for Mr. Bowden, no. Every Tuesday. So Monday is out, Tuesdays is out, Wednesdays are out, and Fridays are out, so it's Thursdays, yes.
Thursday is, everybody?
Yeah, third, so it has to be. Yeah, third, so it has to be on a third, because Mondays are out, Tuesdays are out, Wednesdays are out and Fridays are out, so we only left with Thursday.
The thirty-first?
Thursdays, that's all we left with Thursdays, unless you want to wait till the next meeting.
You got a fall festival on the Thursday, but we can still be here, but they'll be out there doing.
What? Let's, let's look at this.
Let me see.
What would it do if we were having that our next scheduled meeting? That's too long?
Why is that too long? Why is that too long?
You wait another two weeks?
I mean, when is it gonna hurt?
So, yeah, you're about to say it Thursday.
I don't think, I don't think two, I don't think two weeks won't be, I mean, do the next scheduled meeting.
That would be till twelve, right?
And then we'll have a workshop, we'll have the workshop on the fourth, right? At four o'clock, right? No, it'll be a regular scheduled meeting.
That's the end of the month. Next Thursday, Thursday first, we can be here all over.
Yes, it's next Thursday, five with everybody?
The reason I'm saying, we're trying to rush and, and do this, the actual motion for this been made over a month, two months ago almost. What's another, two weeks?
Another two weeks?
That's not another, that's a month.
We, we canceled the twelfth meeting.
You canceled the twelfth, it's a, it's a month.
Okay, I'm gonna just ask again, is next Thursday bad for anybody?
Yes.
Okay, is one at least bad, is, is bad for? So let's just go ahead at the next regular scheduled commission meeting. I mean, we tried and that's all we think we can really do. Now, I don't think we would need a work, do we need a workshop?
Prior to?
Yeah.
Because it's a regular scheduled meeting, yes.
Finish the contract.
It's a regular scheduled meeting, yeah, so we would need a workshop. That would be that Thursday, that was if we could get it too. So it'd be a regular scheduled meeting.
Do a workshop and a regular commission meeting, but if we're doing a regular commission meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
You just do it, if you're doing a regular commission meeting, you can do it the same way you did it tonight, which is workshop and then.
We might not have enough time starting before a regular commission meeting because look how long it took us to get through that today, starting at five o'clock. We still ran into our regular commission meeting time.
We really wanted to.
There might be a lot of questions and, and comments on that, so we need time.
We really wanted to do it two hours, give ourselves some time, but we didn't get there. So, workshop at four o'clock then? Prior to the uh regular scheduled meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting.
Thursday, so we can't do Thursday.
So there's one day that we're dedicating to wrap everything up, the workshop and the regular commission meeting. We don't have to decide on two days to do something, workshop one day and a regular commission made the meeting the next, so. If we're, like, polling the commissioners on the date, if we weren't able to set a date here with everybody individually trying to sign, find a date, it's gonna be even harder. I, I understand what you're saying, you can try, but it gonna be more difficult than what it is right now. I know it's a month away, but everyone can be at that particular meeting. The only thing is, just have the workshop till the five o'clock, four o'clock to give ourselves a little more time. And then if we run over, we'd have to wrap it up in our regular meeting and take care of whatever, Lucy, and we don't take care of.
I'm, I'm always thinking ahead, Mayor. And the reason I'm suggesting that is that we have a couple of different projects that's going to expire uh the end of the year, and I'm for certain that we're gonna need workshops and potentially special meetings to complete those projects.
I'm not saying don't try, I'm just saying I believe it just gonna be more difficult than tonight trying to get a meeting day set, at least try.
And I, I have a suggestion too. Why do we do, can't we schedule workshops on a day other than the same day as the commission meeting? That way we can give ourselves enough time and not be trying to, well, even like a Tuesday, we don't have a council meeting, do the workshop on that day. That will give us, especially on something as important as this.
Well, you, you, you all don't always have issues that may, you know, be deserving of a two hour time spot. But this one is, I'm just saying, but generally speaking, you don't really.
Yes, but this particular issue here is something.
Can you, can, which you do, what?
On Saturday.
I believe now the consensus would be for us to have our regular scheduled meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting, and have a workshop two hours prior, beginning at four. If two hours too long, then we'll do five, I'm thinking we'll just try to do it at four.
Yeah, I mean, it may.
What's not a consensus?
Right, that's why I said consensus, I understand, right.
What, to start at four?
So we'll do, we'll do five, we got half of.
We don't got a word of three thirty?
I have responsibilities every Monday and Tuesday, my father be doing some Monday and Tuesday. So I gotta do what I gotta do and make it back here by, by today, by five o'clock, then it'll be by four thirty, then it'll happen.
So we'll have the workshop at five. Hopefully with an hour, and then if it spill over, we'll just do it at our regular commission meeting. I'm saying the discussion of the contract, we'll finish up there. That we only having to be away from home just that one day versus two. We, we have, we have a resolution, I just need a, a motion or to have continuation of.
To defer it, Mr. Mayor, uh-huh, until that date, until the, right.
But just ask some questions, I've heard it to the, can you have a meeting on the Saturday if you choose to?
Well, the issue, the issue is, Vice Mayor, the issue is, um, it's a, it would be a sunshine meeting. And so ideally, you want to meet on days that the public will have the most access to come. That's why you all have a lot of evening meetings and a lot of commissions don't meet during the day, because you want to make it accessible to the public, it is a public meeting. And so Saturdays tends to be, you know, a date that the public is not likely to come, to come to meetings.
Okay, so I move that we suspend, um, what resolution is this?
Defer.
Oh, defer. Let me see what, twenty twenty-four forty-nine?
Fifty. Twenty twenty-four.
Can't hardly see. Well, I don't have it on in my thing. Okay, so we, oh, we gotta wait for the mayor to come back.
Well, the Vice Mayor can take the motion.
Oh, okay, I move that we defer voting on resolution twenty twenty-four fifty until the next regular scheduled meeting and have a workshop.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Secretary Cloudy and a second by Commissioner Everett to, uh, suspend?
Defer.
Defer.
Defer the uh resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty, any questions? Here none, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab absent.
We're on vote, Mayor Bab. Call for your vote?
Yes.
Or defer, yes?
Yes.
So we have four to one.
Motion to defer is approved by four to one, which was. Next we have resolution, add a resolution we had earlier, it's now twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one. See there Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute grant agreements between qualified applicants and the City of Pahokee for the COVID nineteen residential utilities and rental assistance program, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-one involves use of ARPA funds of one thousand dollars under, under the residential utilities and rental assistance program. The applicant has applied and been approved for the same. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-one.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having had resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab moved that we would adopt uh resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Pearson Senior. Call for questions?
I have one question, if all of the funding for that program, for that is not used, what, because December is, when is, is December the deadline? For ARPA funding, so then?
Funds have to be committed by December, end of December.
So if all of those funding is not used for that, that we set aside for that program, what, what are we gonna do with it?
Actually, I thought we was gonna have a discussion with the City Commission to decide how those additional funds or the funds that wasn't spent, how they would be used. I personally would hope that we use them for infrastructure. And we got so many roads, I mean, they look terrible. So whatever funds that we can get, and maybe have to get some additional funding to finish off some of these roads, even if it's that covering parcel, it is terrible, it's worse than ever been.
So do we know how much funding we have? Is this the first pocket of money, um, City Manager, that's being used from what we allocated for this, for the rent and?
Yes, this is the first, first allocation under this program, it's two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under this umbrella of funds for this particular program.
And so it's open and available now, or has it closed, or this was application that was submitted a while back?
No, this application was submitted maybe within a month, month and a half, and it took some time for the applicant to um adhere to the the forms that needed to be presented. And she was finally able to do so late last week, that's how it ended up being an add-on for this particular meeting.
Question, do we have a closing date for this program, or, or, or as a matter of fact, all of them? Do we have a closing date for all of the programs?
Yes, I met with staff, it was just last week, and we've decided if funds have not been allocated by the first meeting of December, that's the target date that we're looking to have all of them committed, all the funds committed to a program. The, I think this might be the one area that we may be able to reallocate and use for additional uh projects. I would say I would be under an impression to believe that the um home repair program will be very, very close to being completed by the end of the year. We, we have a couple of things afoot that as, as early as tomorrow, we should be in a position to be very close to having commitments to have those funds uh committed. Also, I've also asked finance along with the um ARPA program manager to provide a report by end of this week to give me some total of all of the remaining funds for all of the categories and enough times, if there's a reason and rationale to consider reauthorization, I'll bring it before you for your consideration.
I would strongly, Mr. uh City Manager, suggest bringing it before us because individually, these help individual entities or families, but doing the roads and streets can have a bigger impact on the majority of our residents. So we did a lot to help uh with the ARPA funding, we, we helped business and nonprofit, we helped individuals. We, we got to take care of the city needs that would help this community uh more, so. So I'm just hoping that uh whatever funds we haven't spent, we can have some type of reconsideration on how we can use them.
Okay, I'll have, I have options available for you at the next commission meeting.
I just want to put out there, since you all are talking about it, you know, you have a certain time to encumber it. And so, and then you have to spend it, you know, it's next, next, next year, but you have to encumber it, meaning you have to have contracts and everything else. So you have just a small window of time to try to get that done, so. Encumber it, meaning procured, contracted, okay.
And my comment would be, since this is already approved and recommended by staff, I would suggest we move forward on this one individual, but the rest, we need to have some redirection on that spending. I wouldn't move forward on any other application, if no application, especially.
We have some, Ann, but there has been, there's not been any real activity since the initial application process. And staff has called to have people to come in to complete, but that's, that's not happening.
I move we suspend those, I move.
And also.
So can I amend my motion then?
Because, cause also some of these funds, I know we're talking about the infrastructure, is it possible? But with the short windows, man, I don't know if it'll even be possible that maybe assist with some of that with, can I finish, maybe?
You're saying not even address this?
No, I wanted to amend it and say that we pay this one and close it out. And anyone that has not turned in necessary documentation, that we close it out so that we can move forward.
Yes, with the allocation of funds, the infrastructure, and I'm thinking about our parks again. And I know with the short window, it's probably gonna be a very, very difficult task to get secure contracts and all that kind of stuff with the thing, but I'm just putting that out there. Some of that funding can assist with improving our parks. If, if the funding can be used for that.
Commissioner Calvin Williams have added an amendment to her original motion, which you want to repeat again.
You make the motion?
Did we close out this emotion?
I'm amending that motion. That is the offer. That is supposed to twenty forty-nine.
Oh, so you meant this one?
Yeah. So go back to the original resolution.
Attorney, she would like to amend her motion, her original motion to.
Did you have the motion on the floor?
We have a separate motion on the floor already.
Your motion is, on the floor is.
To accept the resolution. But close the, um, so maybe that would be something different, it's still with that? So I, it's just, okay, so just accept the resolution, okay.
Are there any additional questions? On the original resolution as presented? Harry and I, are you ready for a vote? Roll call Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk, thank you Commissioners, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one passed by unanimous vote.
So Mayor Bab, will I be out of order if I ask you now if I can make that motion, or no, it has to go for a future agenda item? That we close?
It, it would need to go for a future agenda item.
Okay.
Next is new business presentation by the City Manager of activities or upcoming events, if any.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I just want to remind you of tomorrow's Tri-City delegation legislative prior to this town, town hall. Um, it's gonna be from six thirty to eight thirty at the Community United Methodist Church, four oh one Southwest First Street. four oh one Southwest First Street, Belle Glade. And it was Commissioner Baxter and municipal officials from the Tri-Cities for a town hall to discuss the legislative priorities of the citizens of the Tri-Cities. I'm in the process of emailing each of you recommended twenty twenty-four legislative request rankings. You'll have that in advance of tomorrow's meeting. Some of those items include City of Pahokee Marina Improvement that will take in consideration LOX, DOCS A, B, and C. City of Pahokee Campground Repairs and Acquisition of Cabins. Continued infrastructure of the resurfacing of inner-city streets, place sidewalks, clean out East Lake Village Canal wall and fencing, and demucking of MLK and Glade Citizens Villa Parks are some of the ones that you will receive. And I provided information in advance of that meeting. I requested an agenda for the meeting and was told that it was just be much more of a roundtable discussion for the community. I also would like to... I'll go ahead and do this under the city head, mainly the mayor had discussions and concerns about the city's medical insurance buyout policy program. Full-time employees are qualified, the City of Pahokee's, through the help of the City Clerk and the city insurer, we were able to find a resolution that was adopted, a policy that was adopted in two thousand and twelve that allows for medical insurance buyout program for the City of Pahokee. And essentially, an employee who elects to participate in the insurance buyout program must provide documentation of comparable medical insurance coverage and sign an appropriate waiver of medical insurance coverage to the city. Elected commissioners, as of the date of the adoption of this policy, shall not be eligible. Commissioners who are newly elected or re-elected after the date of this policy will be, will be eligible. By enrolling in the insurance buyout program, you're verifying that you have insurance coverage from another source. An employee must be in an insurance-eligible position for six full months before any payment will be made. No partial payments will be made. Insurance buyout payment would be made with the first payroll in December. Buyout payments are subject to all normal payroll deductions. The buyout amount will be reflected on the employee's W-two. The city reserves a right to discontinue or modify this program for future calendar years. As it stands now, a policy is in place. We have some suggestions and recommendations on amending the existing policy. This particular policy outlines a thousand dollars for the buyout. You may want to reconsider and look at other options due to the cost of insurance since two thousand and twelve. You may want to increase it, decrease it, or leave it the same. I'll take your suggestions and recommendations for a future commission item, agenda item. And I had old business, we didn't talk much about that. I think accidentally skipped over it. But I just wanted to make the commission and mayor in our community aware of assistance from FEMA. And there's different layers of assistance. There's assistance for individuals and households under FEMA. There's public assistance for Palm Beach County. There's support for business and agriculture. And there's even, uh, have ways of assisting residents or businesses if they're interested. I have all of the information, documentation, telephone number, email, hotlines. We'll post it on the city's website, and if there's any individual household, business or agribusiness has been impacted by Hurricane Milton, we can provide assistance in helping you, helping those individuals and businesses do that. I'd also ask Chief to provide an overall update from her vantage point of what occurred, how we responded, and how things were handled during Hurricane Milton. She's prepared to do so, and so I called her up at this time.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
City Manager, Attorney, Officer, Citizen, everybody. This is only gonna take twenty minutes. First of all, I feel that we're blessed on the Glades region because we didn't have any fatalities through the hurricane, direct, from direct, from the effects of the hurricane. So first, I'm gonna start real quick. I'm gonna talk about the first hurricane, because I can't believe that we got, right? One back-to-back. Since it kind of went north, we didn't get affected as much in Palm Beach County, eastern or western communities, but the state of Florida did request that Palm Beach County file rescue with help. So we were able to provide help to our neighbors that they needed it so much without affecting our response and our emergency service to the cities. We've been creating a team, not me, but the gentleman who's creating the team. He had Swift Water Rescue, which are for those who, they don't know what it is. It's pretty much boats, boats that go on rapid waters, you know, floods and stuff like that. And it requires special skills and training for these gentlemen and special equipment. Dangerous, very dangerous job. So we were able to send a Type One Swift Water Rescue Team, which included sixteen firefighters. These firefighters are, you know, like I said, they have all kinds of equipment from, from boat, from trailers, to lights, to all kinds of things. So they happened to be able to deploy, and they were staged on Okala, and then they went out there and helped them. So we didn't have any effects here, so we were able to, like I said, go over there and help them out. Now, let's go back now to Milton. This is the one that I was kind of afraid it was gonna take us from the West Coast, right? But like I said, we got lucky in a sense. I feel that a lot of people are still suffering, and I know of people on the East Coast, they're actually still without power. So we, the way we prepare, prepare, we prepare for the worst, pretty much. Some of the things that we did is we up-staffed some trucks out here. What I mean by up-staffing these trucks is we have a brush truck, which one day I'm gonna bring you pictures of them, or if you guys want to come and see it, I'd be, I would love to give you guys a tour. So these brush trucks are pretty much made to drive through difficult terrains, but they're also high, so we able to evacuate people through them, you know, because they're high-water vehicles. So if somebody gets trapped in a flood or something, we can take them out of there. So I was able to stop that truck. Also, the county opened shelter on Lakeshore, on Lakeshore and Belle Glade. I wasn't aware of the, the capacity of this shelter, so I walked through both days that I was here, actually. And for those of you, just the small information, that shelter can actually hold two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two people. So that's like almost three thousand people. And it, it's, it's a great location for the shelter. So I was pretty amazed, because I've worked the shelters before, but I never worked this one. And this shelter, I asked the, the staff, they were really nice, you know. PBSO were there with us, and we have, I have two teams of paramedics consisting of three people each at all times in the shelter. The atmosphere in the shelter was very calm. You know, it was one of those things that people actually were nervous, but we were all just pretty much knowing that the person that we're gonna get the hit was the other people up north, right? Or we were thinking Tampa or anything else. So it was a pretty good atmosphere. We finally did a count, because I wanted them to give me, you know, a count of how many people we were getting. We were like three hundred and fifty-two people that used the shelter. One of the things that, the count is, because if I need to call for logistics or support, the more people start coming to the shelter, the tighter it's gonna be, the more propensity for us to be, if we need to evacuate, if it starts hitting us hard, it's too late, the go, no-go situations that we have. How many ambulances and rescues will I need? So if the count is important for us. Like I said, it went, it went on the vent for actually. The one thing that I did observe is, since we just got hit, right? On the East Coast, on the West Coast, I apologize. People were still fleeing from the West Coast, you know? So I never took that in consideration when I just got started getting calls from people saying twenty-seven, it's packed. And I'm like, what? Well, people are still fleeing, and the Milton's coming now, so they don't want to stay there after everything that they done over there, right? Fort Myers and on, and Naples and all that. So we had a small traffic jam on twenty-seven, but what caught my attention is they were stopping at our station on the South End, and they were asking our firefighters that they were scared, that they needed to find a shelter. That's never happened to me, you know, from people from all the coast moving to, to, you know, to get away from the storm, they also stopping. So I think we counted seventeen people that we were able to help coming from the West Coast. So that was the first time this happened to me. It wasn't the other cities bringing them, like Wellington and stuff. No, it was people running from the last hurricane, from the disaster, trying to get away. They actually listening to the community leaders, you know, directions, saying, hey, you need to evacuate. So it, I never seen that, it's happening. So that was a good thing. And the next thing that I want to tell you, fifteen more minutes, fifteen, fifteen more minutes. Just kind of show everybody still with me, still with me? Good. Let's get to live. So on the Milton, we, we all heard the tornadoes coming and then closed down. And I actually got phone calls too, because my friends were saying, hey, there's a tornado going towards your house. I was actually here for the two days, so I have to leave my mother, my family, you know, and I said, hey, good luck, you know? So I was kind of scared, because they can see the tornado traveling north, and it actually did hit our areas. So some of the areas that got hit worse, it was Wellington, Locksahatchee, and Royal Pond. For you guys, have ever traveled through North Lake? You seen that Publix there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I live really close. I was really scared. So I'm not going to Publix anymore, I'm going to Winn-Dixie. But no, so it, it got really close to home, right? It got really close to home. Palm Beach County responded to, you know, a lot of calls. One of the things that I want to mention is our dispatch, our EOC Center, this, you know, ladies and gentlemen, they're sitting in there taking phone calls. So just to put it in perspective, when tornadoes started hitting us, especially in those areas, there was a span of about fifty to fifty minutes to sixty minutes of phone calls, nonstop, just coming into, to our dispatch. Did you imagine how many people's calling? That's how many tornadoes were, were touching down and destroying property and injuring people. So for almost a solid hour, dispatchers were taking down one call, just on the tornadoes. That was close to five PM, I remember, too. And it, and it's kind of weird, too, because usually those things happen in the middle of the night, when you can't see anything. So we were kind of blessed, we still have some light, right? We, Palm Beach County actually immediately sent at least forty units. Forty units, that means engines, rescues, command staff. So forty units throughout the county were responding to those emergencies. Firefighters rescued multiple people from damaged structures to overturned vehicles, people trapped in the rubble, you know, stuck on their vehicles or overturned, tossed, tossed vehicles. It was, it was chaotic, you know, to, to see something like that happen in Florida, right? Like, what is it, Kentucky or Kansas or something like that? Well, we, like, it's with the next tornado alley here. There was also two gentlemen, I think they were strapped on an RV, so we have to use a special operations team to get them out. And, and that's pretty much what I wanted to tell you, the extent of, of having all these hurricanes, you know, like, we don't think about, we think about high winds and stuff, but all kinds of emergencies can happen. For here, for what my, my, our guys in our fire department did is, we kept the shelters. There was a lot of power lines down. That was the one thing that I was really surprised. Pahokee and Belle Glade, we were responding to a lot of power lines down. One fire that we had here, too, is actually the result, I think. That, actually, I'm not gonna say, because I don't know if it's still in the investigation, but we still have fires going on through power lines and power down and stuff like that. So, but we didn't get hurt, we didn't have a direct fatality from, from the hurricane. We were ready, we, we were able to get extra staff. The shelter ran really smooth, and, you know, we got to spend a lot of time together on the station, because it was two solid days. So any questions you guys may have?
Well, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Winn-Dixie onto the...
Thank you so much.
The only other thing I would add, Mayor, is that the city is operating under the declarations that were determined by Palm Beach County, which will allow us to seek reimbursements under certain categories. And we're in the process of collecting that data from our carrier, so we can be in a position to request reimbursement for it.
And we'll go into the report of the mayor, which will be brief. First of all, I'd just like to thank God for the blessing and for covering us over during Hurricane Milton. The Glades area didn't sustain any substantial damages other than some major tree damage to limbs and actual trees. Outside of that, we were very blessed to not have been impacted by the last two hurricanes. I can remember the time we had two back-to-back. It'd been about ten or more years ago, but we had a major impact on our community, so it's a blessing. In addition to that, I would like for us to just continue to pray and keep those that was impacted in our thoughts and prayers, because there is a lot of folks throughout Florida that was impacted and have some severe damage and even lost a life. So again, we were really blessed to, to escape that. Also, over here, you see the banner congratulating Pahokee High School for their twenty twenty-four homecoming. One of the representatives from the high school had asked whether the city would be able to provide some type of signage or a banner. We approved at our last commission meeting to allow the city manager to find some resources so we could have a banner on display during the homecoming parade. So that's a banner. So I want to thank the city manager for that speedy...
They're going on the floor some...
Response. Yeah, what they gonna do? We gonna fly, I would say, have it flown over some area during the parade route, either that or have staff hold it up, preferably somewhere they can see it as they come through the parade route.
That's a head and down.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion, I don't really, I don't know if we have or something that's gonna be in the parade. I don't know if you can get some volunteers from the city that if you can put a pole on it and just have them walk in front of the, in the parade.
Right.
Instead of spending that money on the time.
Hey, Jay, they're trying to trade it, so if we can't do that, we can at least have them hang it somewhere. But that's a great idea to see about being in the parade itself. I know everyone could participate in the parade if they choose to do so. It's a form and, and, and something you have to fill out with your car insurance or vehicle insurance and all of that. But we have in the past, at least some of the commissions have participated in the actual parade. So that's a consideration also. Also, want to thank the fire chief and her staff and PBSO and Red Cross, and everyone who was associated with putting, installed in the, the smoke detectors and the carbon dioxide detectors. They're state of art. I think it was second time around for Pahokee, they went, I don't know, how many you all covered in, in the Pahokee area? I don't know, how many of you all covered in, in the Pohokee area?
Oof, um, I think the total that she gave me is about eight hundred.
Wow.
But I'm not sure if it's a hundred and half over here, and we're gonna have a third round.
Okay, wonderful. But that was something that, uh, I really appreciate. I was able to receive a few in my home and my detector probably, the battery was out for at least two years. But I'm just encouraging them to check them, I think they're required to be checked at least once a month.
Well, these don't have to work.
No.
No, they're ten years.
Oh, ten years. All right, that ends my report. Next is the report of the city manager.
Nothing additional, uh, you received, uh, some updates, um, on your dice. If you don't have any additional questions from those updates, I don't have anything further tonight.
I know you mentioned one of the things too about the legislative, uh, initiative. You mentioned about the campground and I didn't get all the details.
I'm going to provide the details. You'll have the details in an email later tonight or tomorrow.
Next will be the report of the city attorney, if any.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is the future agenda items of commission, if any.
I have one. If we could add on the next, um, the, um, soap journals, healing heart, um, that we would like to present them the, uh, the funds that was donated to, um, to them through the breast cancer, uh, paint walk.
I'll second. Oh, we won't have to vote on that.
No, we're, we're voting on everything, we know that vote has to be at the city.
Oh, I was, I second it.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Mervin, proper second by Commissioner Williams, uh, that we provide on the next agenda.
Soap journals, healing hearts.
Call for questions. Here in nine, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Commissioner Williams?
Um, yes. Uh, future agenda item, um, that we talk about the opera projects and close all other projects out and vote to use the remaining funds for infrastructure.
I'll second.
You've been moved and second. Call for questions?
Um, does, by infrastructure specifically, are we talking about just the roads? Are we, are we gonna include the parks and the marina or we just gonna say infrastructure?
That open file, that's open file, look, right.
Okay. You're no additional question, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
I have another one, Mayor Bab. Um, if we could put on the agenda, we were supposed to have a workshop to discuss the community boards and look through them to see what changes we need to make and which ones we needed to collapse.
Did we do that?
Uh-uh, we only did parks and rec.
Oh, okay.
We didn't do the rest of them.
Finished up the process.
Yeah, we never did, we, yeah, we just did parks and recs, but we were supposed to do all of them.
Been moved and second. Call for questions? Here in nine, you ready for a vote?
Well, look, just a quick question. Will, will it be helpful to, uh, provide an update on? The boards have been established and we have applications out for all boards. And speaking to the clerk earlier, uh, she is in, uh, position to present which boards will be completely filled, uh, based on, uh, two previous workshops that you kind of defined which boards you wanted to keep. I think the challenge becomes, uh, having people to join the boards.
Volunteers.
Volunteers. Um, again, we have the boards that was agreed upon or decided upon from two previous workshops. And unless you're looking for something specifically in another workshop, I think we may end up, discussing some of the same things.
I don't remember, I remember we talked about parks and rec, but I don't remember us talking about all of them because some of the boards, we said we wanted to collapse because they were saying the same thing. I don't remember us having a workshop on all of them.
Yeah, we, we made, we had a workshop and you kind of identified which boards you wanted and gave direction to staff to basically put applications out. We receive applications enough to, to completely fill Parks and Rec Board, Advisory Board. Uh, there's others that have applied, but we don't have enough applications to bring forward, um, to approve a full slate of, of, of members for those additional boards. And now unless you're, uh, recommending removing some of the existing boards that you have, I, I think we have directives already to, to move forward with the boards.
Okay, but can you just provide me a copy of the changes that we made and the ones that we got rid of, if you don't mind? Because I'm, I guess I missed that.
I, I don't think, to be honest, I don't think we clearly got rid of any board.
No, we didn't.
So that's why I'm just asking if I can.
Focus on the one we want to push and trying to get back reestablished. Because one thing about a board, even if it's not active, at least it's there and at some future point, residents may say, you know what, this is a board I want to serve on, and you may get enough applicants to do that, so. Um, that versus just eliminating the board altogether.
Oh, no, I was just asking because I remember we discussed it. I knew we went ahead and did what we was gonna do with Parks and Rec because they wanted Parks and Recs to get started. And then I know we said we was gonna discuss the other boards that we wanted to go ahead and see it. I think one of them was, um, the, with the youth, but I, I never remember us being concrete, so that's why I was asking, so.
So with the information you provide, you think that would be, you're gonna look and see if that's sufficient enough?
Yeah.
To not need or handed on it.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, so.
Yeah, provided to, to the court.
Since we have a discussion about this, on the board, have any of the boards that have been established, have they met yet? Then, because my, my concern is I would really like for them to come before us and give us some updates as to, you know, what's being discussed, whatever, at least quarterly.
Parks and Recs, um, has not met yet. Um, I did, um, speak with the clerk and, um, and we have letters that will be issuing out to try and establish the first meeting for Park and Rec.
Point of privilege, uh, we canceled the last motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Bowden, any suggestions? And I did have one, uh, city manager, but I think it was approved anyway since you were talking about it, uh, earlier. The, uh, buy, I wanted that on the agenda to see whether or not we were gonna increase that or leave it at is or whatever. Probably ours, you know, personally, they said it does save money when, when staff buy.
Yeah, okay.
Costs us less to do it. Okay. Commissioner McPherson?
Yes, uh, the only one, uh, as far as agenda items, the performance evaluation, I want to make sure that those get on the, um, thing for the city clerk as well as the, um, city manager. Um, because I think it's only fair to be, you know, bring those before them and like give them what those expectations are and everybody be aware. Get that to the, I've, I've seen copies of both of them, but there may be some things that we may want to change on that. And we could probably, I don't know if we want to put that on the agenda as a discussion, so we can.
Come up with an evaluation tool.
Establish, you know, and look at what we already have and make whatever necessary changes to it.
There's second?
Second.
Okay, been moved by Commissioner McPherson and proper second by Commissioner Bowden. Call for questions? Here in nine, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed. Next we'll have general.
Oh, I have one question. Um, the chamber, did we, did we have to vote on that? Or we were just waiting to get information back on the chamber? I know we were supposed to be joining.
Yeah, we, 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 I think we did that.
Yes.
You can give us her status or give us a statement.
Yes, the, everything has been, we're, we're a- active members of the chamber in Belkley. There was a, um, we needed to change the application. We originally, uh, was under the impression that we should apply as a nonprofit under the, um, the chamber, the Black Chamber of Commerce. They sent back the information and indicated that we would have to sign up under a different category, so we're in the process of doing that. And, and the other with the, uh, regional chamber is, is also, we're in the process of making application for that one as well. So we'll be done with, we have one now and two pending. And we should have schedules of meetings and activities for all three ones within the next couple of weeks, if not before.
And how much did those, they end up costing the city?
I think one costs three hundred with the city of Belkley. I think the one, the Black Chamber is six hundred and I'm not sure of the amount for, for the other. But it's somewhere within that, that range as well, between three and six hundred.
That's central, right?
That's central, right?
Yes.
So it's six hundred as well?
I'm not sure of the exact amount, but it's, it's somewhere within that three hundred to six hundred dollar range.
Okay. Next we have general public comments, city clerk. Do we have anyone from the public who have submitted a comment card?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have commissioner comments and for the good of the order. And we'll start with Commissioner McPherson and we'll take the rank.
Uh, yes, just want to, again, get over Mayor Bab's head. Uh, thank God for this blessing, this little community of Pohokee, that we didn't have any major damages and any major, no catastrophes or anything during the hurricane. The other thing, uh, just some requests we'd like for the, um, contract, um, since I'm over that, um, auditing committee, that we can, the final contract that was signed by the auditor, that we can bring back the, um, copy and at least give all the commissioners a copy because I like to be transparent in what we, whatever we do. So everybody have a copy at least of the contract to know what we've actually agreed to.
Okay, contract is being executed, uh, beginning work on the two thousand twenty-three audit as of last week. Met with H T and Mr. Harvey in finance and we're moving forward with an anticipated completion, um, of the twenty twenty-three audit, uh, by end of November, first week of December. But I will provide a copy of the executed contract to you and the commission.
Top of the campground already. Uh, soccer, um, I know Parks and Rec, um, may be getting a little bit off, so because I just want to try to push the issue, um, that we can start trying to reach out and I know it takes volunteers to do that and that's one of the things that we've been struggling with. That we can start trying to advertise, uh, uh, if possible, so we can try to get a soccer league started for our youth. To continue, I think it would be, uh, an addition as far as even making money, additional funding for, for the city. Because I know, uh, we haven't had it in a couple of years and I don't think the city was over the original program, but I think it was successful programmably, Josie Hernandez was spearheading it. And, um, I don't know if we can get in contact with her, I may reach out to herself to see if, um, some of those, yeah, I know she, she's not here anymore. And, um, which I did make contact with her last year, but my thing is to try to see if we can, um, secure some of those volunteers that was helping her and if they want to continue that program.
Commissioner, we, we've already had meetings through our Park and Recs department with the, um, the, uh, entity that you mentioned, um, and there is, there will be a schedule, if not already in place, for the soccer program, uh, which will be a vibrant, very successful program. All of the participants that participated in the programs in the past under that organization is committed to, um, continue that program and will work with, with them as, in a partnership to make sure that becomes a reality.
And the reason I have quite a few Spanish people have stopped me in the community, you know, asking about it.
Okay, you can refer them directly to Parks and Rec. I'll provide a, a contact number directly to that office for you. Have them call you to come by and we'll be able to make sure that they're married with the partnership and be able to participate as well.
That's it for me.
Okay. I'll just make one brief comment. Speaking on that same line, uh, city manager, could we include, uh, Parks and Rec in the next, uh, town hall? I believe they presented once before, but because, for lack of a better word, this is a sports city or community and you have so many residents want to give input and be involved. Maybe if the director can give, uh, some his goals and vision or plan for the future activities that may be not currently being provided, but what does the community like to see expanded in Parks and Rec? Uh, also I've heard some just suggestion as far as, uh, I know football is a big, I won't say money maker, but it does provide some income and help pay for equipment and other things. But I believe if I'm not mistaken, we collect money, uh, ourselves physically, unless money change like that, unless you have a problem. But we can even look at the, how they do high school where you have to go online and submit a request for a ticket or whatever, a make in your payment there. I think overall that probably help a lot in a way, but I'd just like to see the program expand to many sports that we can afford to pay for, uh, uh, whatever they want to have done.
Yes, sir.
Just consider adding to our next workshop. Who, who do we have on the next workshop, though, I think we got? Are you, have you scheduled anyone, uh, for that town hall?
I think the last one that was postponed, and Ms. Adams helped me out here from speaking in there. I think that was, uh, scheduled for, I'll let Ms. Adams tell me.
The next presenters for town hall was, uh, City Clerk's Department Cemetery and I think, uh, Finance.
So when I'm asking if it's able to just include Parks and Rec too, too?
When is the next town hall? When is the next town hall?
We haven't scheduled the actual date as of yet.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. No comments. Commissioner Williams?
I think I have one on that. I guess not.
Good night, no comments.
Okay, thank you.
Say the last of this.
I just want to say thank you again to all of our citizens that came out for our first muck, sweat and cheers peat walk. I think the attorney came out, the chief came out, P B S O came out. Not only did they come out, they even, uh, participated in the walk. And I want to thank the ones who even donated, but wasn't, that they wasn't able to walk, but they even donated. So I just want to give a big shout out, it was a big, huge success to all of our, uh, partners that just came in at the last minute to help put it together. I want to say thank you, next year we looking for bigger and better. Um, I want to, I'll give a shout out to Mr. Sam King who cooked, um, the breakfast, which was very good, um, for the walk and to Dean who did our zumba. So again, I want to say I thank you to all of our residents that came out and ones that wanted to come out and couldn't make it because of other, other obligations, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you and thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Has been moved by Commissioner Cowan Williams and second by Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin. Call for questions? Here in nine, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-seven. Still.
Yeah, I know.